Good morning, everyone. Going to try to get us to come to order here. All right. So, good morning. Thanks all. Thanks, everyone for being here. It's always good to see a full room at our meetings. I'll call this meeting of TRPA's APC to order. Today is Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's nine thirty-three. And the first item on the agenda is to call our quorum. So I'm going to hand this over to Tracy to help me with that.
Mr. Oling. Ms. Carr.
Here.
Oh, Ms. Carr.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Drake. Mr. Drew.
Good morning.
Mr. Ehrlich. Mr. Ferry.
Good morning.
Ms. Ferris. Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Ms. Weidra.
Good morning.
Mr. Judge. Mr. McNamara.
Yes.
Ms. Marulis O'Neil.
Good morning.
Ms. Cyber. Ms. Stala.
Here.
Chief Steven.
Here.
Mr. Tashara. He's on his way. Mr. Hitchcock.
Here.
And Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, I'm going to go back to you now, Tracy, to just remind us all of the meeting rules for the day, especially for online participants.
For members of the public to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting Hybrid Meeting from May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. There you will find a link to the public webinar posted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you will be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and be unmuted. For items that are agendized as informational only, we will hear public comment during the general public comment period at the end of the meeting. For items agendized for action or possible action, we'll hear public comment before the APC takes any action. To remote members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You'll find that icon at the bottom of your screen. You may also may not use the chat box to make any comments or have sidebar conversations. And please remember to mute your mic unless speaking to cut down on background noise. And finally, please turn on your camera if you're able. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for saying that so eloquently for us all yet again. We're going to have that memorized soon. Okay, I'm going to move us on to item two. And while I ask John if there's any changes to the agenda, I'm going to wish him a happy birthday today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you, John. I will deem the agenda approved as it was posted. I'm going to move us on to item three. This is Public Interest Comments. Tracy, I think you're going to remind us briefly about Public Interest Comments.
Oh, I forgot about this one. Here we go. Any member of the public which is to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the Raise the Hand button at the bottom of your screen or by dialing star nine, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a staff member. All comments should be as brief and concise as possible, so that all who wish to participate may do so. Testimony should not be repeated. The chair shall have the discretion to set appropriate time allotments for individual speakers as well as for the total time allotted to oral public comment. No extra time for participants would be permitted by the ceding of time to others. In the interest of efficient meeting management, the chair reserves the right to limit the duration of public comment to a total of one hour. Written comments received by four P M. Yesterday were forwarded to the APC members before the meeting start time. Late comments may be distributed after the meeting. Please include meeting information and the agenda item in the subject line of your email. Please note, the APC is prohibited by law from taking immediate action or discussion issues raised by the public that are not listed on this agenda.
Thank you, Tracy. Let me just say a quick point, a quick comment about this public interest item here. So we will be hearing public comment with each of the two items today after the presentation is done. There's also a closing public comment period. So this is really for folks who would like to say anything. I'm going to prefer not to be on the agenda, but I understand that perhaps some folks need to go to work and would like to speak on one or more of the items on the agenda today. So if that's the case, I would just say for that limited pool of folks, you can use this opportunity to perhaps speak on one of our items today. If you if you're not in that situation, I'd prefer you to do that with the agenda item. So with that said, let's go ahead and have members of the public in the room who would like to address the APC now come to the podium, and then we'll go online.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. I just wanted to say thank you to the Advisory Planning Committee Commission folks for the robust discussions you've been having at many of the recent meetings that I've attended. It gives the public a sense that you are paying attention to things that are going around on around the lake, not just where you live. And it is appropriate to thank you also this morning for bringing forward and allowing people that do have to work the ability to provide comment. My opinion is if we're giving closing public comment, you didn't have the opportunity to hear some of the concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. Anyone else in the room? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Parks, and I am the chairman of the board at KGID, which is our water provider here on the grade. KGID is a public utility that provides water, sewer, and road maintenance for our district. We will welcome Barton Hospital and any other new business to our district, and we'll try to help them succeed. This is a very needed public development, and I'm not sure that the the public realizes that the current California hospital is is aging out and will longer be able to serve our community. So again, we say welcome to Barton.
Thanks, Sandy. Anyone else in the room? Come on up.
Green button. Go on. Hi, my name is Brent Nittle. I own on Laura Drive, which will be one of the most impacted homes from this eighty-plus-foot hospital. I'm not able to stay until later to speak, but I do want to speak right now about a few things. One thing that we need to get across here is is I've contacted everybody, all the way up to Governor Newsom's office, Senator Titus. Nobody has any data suggesting this hospital is needed in State Line, Nevada. Nobody. Not one person. With that said, the other thing that we're hearing is it's a state-of-the-art hospital. I did contact California Department Health and Newsom's Office. They will allow a state-of-the-art over in California. Barton has twenty-seven acres over there. They're trying to cram it into six point seven over here. We know this site has problems. My issue is we're to this point. It's taken us seven months to get to this point right here. I believe this should have been escalated earlier. Here's the problems that took place along the way. There's P C E contamination on that soil. That's that report was never uploaded to the parcel tracker, so we never got to see that as a public. We need to figure out how that has affected things on that site. And it wasn't answered in 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 by TRPA or anybody else. Once we found out about it. When this first went through, it was an environmental checklist, an initial environmental checklist. It wasn't signed by anybody. It wasn't dated by anybody. It wasn't accepted by anybody in TRPA, signed and accepted. On that environmental checklist, fifty-four impacts were answered no. Correction, out of ninety-one, fifty-four is answered no impact. Thirty-one data insufficient, and then five with yes. No, and then one with no with mitigation. Why this is interesting is it was never questioned. And we know this site has a ton of issues with water and everything else. In addition, we're trying to bring in a helicopter. We're trying to go above the fifty-six-foot level. And again, I'm not here saying we not go above fifty-six. If you can do that, stay within what's allowed. Though I don't want us to start making weird rules that they can get around and go higher. That building will now cast a shadow on my house, and people on the upper floors will see into my backyard from where the the building is located. So of the yes responses on the impact was light and glare, transportation circulation, and scenic resources and community design. Nothing about wildlife, nothing about anything else that really has an impact. But we accepted that from the TRPA standpoint and didn't question any of it. Now, when we go into the scenario with the vehicle miles traveled, another report was submitted saying there'd be a fifty-seven percent reduction in daily one-way vehicle trips, a fifty-nine percent reduction in annual vehicle miles traveled. That doesn't even make sense. And I'll use one example. The ambulances that'll go through the traffic corridor from California to this new location, it will be in two thousand and twenty-four was two thousand eight hundred. We send from Douglas over that way, six hundred and fifty. Right there, you have a huge discrepancy. You have a whole bunch of ambulances going full speed. Correction, going in emergency style to get to this new hospital. We have twenty-five thousand people over on that El Dorado side. We have roughly three thousand over on this side. It just doesn't make sense to go both ways. I'm asking you, don't create mitigations. Have them go within the confines that are already there that have been improved. Please don't create mitigations. We have problems when we create mitigations as as we've seen with the Tahoe Beach Club and what we've seen with vehicle miles traveled at the event center. We don't have a good way of policing it. With that said, I I appreciate your time. I appreciate you guys getting to this point where we're environmental impact statement. This is what we needed from the very beginning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brent. Good morning.
On, yeah, John Gurney here. I am also a neighbor on Laura Drive. First, I'd like to thank TRPA for finally issuing a cease and desist. The flooding was unacceptable. The road encroachment is is a is a problem for the community, and we are here to help the community. I'd like to address more of the hydrology, which, you know, the to date, the the plans and et cetera submitted by Barton have been a total failure through R O. Anderson. You know, that's the flooding continued after their initial B M P plan. We must look and prevent this failure in the in the future. And in order to do that, I think we need independent bodies, not not ones on the payroll of Barton. I've had issues with with the how they've done the done the B M Ps right now. Middle of winter, they put a rapid infiltration pond, less than the width of this from my property. And that is going to, according to USGS, cause a rapid infiltration of water and groundwater into my property, which will impact the the foundations and stuff of my house. The the other impact that that has had, when they did that, we had to stop them. And the TRPA guy advised us to call the police as our houses were shaking, as they were trying to break through the the groundwater level and then dig into the groundwater to create that sediment pond. So I think there's been a lot of failures in the water management in that area. And I think we need to improve that with more science and better better independent studies. Time, I'd also like to talk about the transportation. The idea of trying to use Laura Drive as a main paraffer for a car park. Barton uses in excess of eight hundred car parks a day down there. We've got less than two hundred and seventy here. The I think the math doesn't work out. It doesn't work. I think there's a if there's a the property is the right property for a hospital. There's two sides of the road. There's also the ability for Barton to route their own traffic to their own car park through their own property and not using the public roads, particularly a neighborhood road, which isn't wide enough for us to even have street parking. My third comment would be about the cumulative effects. And I think that they, if you look at anything within reason, the problems of water, traffic, massive traffic numbers through our houses, the noise and congestion, ambulance, you know, additional to the ambulances we already have. We bought houses there knowing there's a fire, a police station there. We didn't buy a house knowing there's going to be thousands of ambulance trips there every day, a helicopter pad potentially originally located less than two hundred feet from my bedroom. The the public walkways are a problem. You know, I don't know how through in construction that a group that is that is supposedly here for the community can go and put a fence up halfway across the public walkway. And if you were to go and look at it yesterday, the front of the property is blown halfway across the the walkway, causing hazards and everything. And there's just no management of it. We need a good science behind what we do, and we need some better better communication from TRPA, Douglas County, and Barton to the community and where we live. That's all I've got.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the room? Good morning.
Morning, Laura Kosky. I really just want to emphasize the word proactive proactive. I really think that if we all just fix our potholes, get some wildlife bridges. The coyotes are being slaughtered out there, and our roads are being painted red. And I've just been trying to help out with the Wildlife Refuge and whatnot, but I really just need to emphasize the congestion. Sierra Tahoe has a lot of accidents, and they have a lot of accidents on Highway fifty and horrible accidents. And we had one gentleman die. It's on Spooner now, and one's going down for manslaughter. And I just want to emphasize, you have to sand, you have to plow, and no one's out there at two, three in the morning. I know, because I traveled to Carson, and it's deep snow. And then everybody's crashing. I filmed and took pictures of these horrible accidents. And we just need to emphasize that the transportation has to get it together. And these five-car pileups, several vehicles flipped over with families in them. There's just no rescue. There's no response. I myself have saved people out there. And because I know they're not going to respond. And they're not going to get there in time. They don't even put a police officer out there on the Nevada side, you know, to try to get people to slow down. I talked to Caltrans, and I said, you have to have twenty-five mile an hour signs. You have to have people downshift. You have way too many, you know, folks from out of the area that don't know on these icy roads. And if you just did those extra steps, we could prevent these five-car pileups. And I'm not kidding, because I work with the tow truck guy. And he's like, Laura, you got to come out and drive him home, because there's been five-car pileups in one night. And it just goes on and on and on, which I have emphasized, and just the congestion with the fire department, even on the line bikes. You'll have a fire truck show up, an ambulance show up. You know, people are hitting these kids, not allowing the potholes and the gravel is wiping out these line bikes, and I mean, serious, serious injuries to these folks, their faces and arms and concussions. And a few of them, if I didn't see them in the bush, I don't think they would have made it. And even having a concussion and allowing the line bikes, you need to boycott this. We have way too many tourists. There's too much distraction. And then you're involved with the alcohol, with all the concerts and whatnot. And you you can't even respond to the drug overdoses at the concerts with twenty a night drug overdoses and ten, which we documented and which I've, you know, been yelling and screaming and talking about over and over to gut one hospital and to put it over on this side. And then you're dealing with five G towers, which kill the bald eagle eggs in thirty minutes. Not alone, it takes sixty minutes to extinguish themselves before they could even put one out. So I just really want to emphasize once again proactiveness and trying to get these wildlife bridges and working with the really, it's just educating people before they even come into the area. And then you have those high-volume days. You have Valentine's Day, Father's Day, Fourth of July, where you need more resources, and they can't all be for one kid that's been nailed by a car with these line bikes, you know, when there's other things. And I've seen cars stuck together. The potholes are so bad now. I filmed. The tires are flying off. Now, how can a tire just fly off with lug nuts? This is how bad the potholes are. And, you know, then they crash into the other lane. I've I've filmed it. I interviewed these people. So this is happening recently. You have too too much volume coming in, and it shows where the kids fell off the ski resort. There's too many people coming in, and we're not proactive enough to slow this down and work together. And that's just what I want to emphasize. And then
Thank you, Laura. Can I can I have you? Okay, thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Any additional public comment in the room? Okay, come on up. Good morning. Morning. Thanks.
Better. Good morning, David Vogt, resident on Laura Drive. In the law, there's a distinction between argument and evidence. And it's pretty broad, what you can argue. It's pretty difficult to look at evidence and really not not accept it. What I'd like to do is pass out some information to you that you probably haven't seen yet. These are applications from Barton to retrofit. These are applications to rep your retrofit. The building, they claim, is not capable of being sizably retrofitted. It's dated two thousand and twenty-three, and since that time, they've been making the argument that they can't retrofit these buildings, that they're unable to, that California won't let them, that they're too old. And yet here's evidence that they, in fact, do believe that they can retrofit those buildings. So as an alternative to building in California, I believe we can also see that they can retrofit their buildings that they currently have in California and utilize them appropriately. As far as this, and of course, I've provided these documents to Chris, so he's seen them, and the response is, well, you caught us, in essence. As far as the E I S, I hope that we see rather than arguments or that we see empirical evidence. We want to see empirical empirical evidence of how many helicopter landings there are, what the D B A's are the of in fifty feet, a hundred feet, two hundred feet, five hundred feet. We just had five helicopter landings at Kale Drive over the last week. That's a quarter mile away from my house, and I can hear him. It gets me out of my house. And you're talking about landing these things a hundred yards away? You know, the state of Nevada allows homeowners and residents the quiet use and enjoyment of their property. I think it's very important that we address those issues. Barton claims they have a thousand employees approximately. That alone coming and going, you're talking about a couple thousand round round trips per day on Laura Drive in addition to vendors, patients, trash, anything else that goes along there. That's a small little street. The four H alleyway is a private road, partly private road. There are a lot of problems with this proposed project. And there are alternatives now, and I've provided you with what Barton has seen as a potential alternative for them as well. So I do encourage you. I thank you for escalating this to an E I S. And I encourage you to make certain that there's empirical empirical evidence in there to substantiate exactly from traffic counts, from rotor wash, from decibel levels, exactly what we're talking about, that you're going to inflict upon the local residents. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the room? Good morning.
Good morning. John Grigsby, local resident. So first, thank you all for requiring full I S, full E I S. You've done the right thing here, and you've restored a significant amount of faith in the TRPA and its process. So thank you. I know you don't hear that much, but we appreciate it. I have a great deal of written feedback about specifics. I think the time here is best used for a more general question, which is why are we doing this in the first place? And TRPA's mission, I think plainly stated, is to ensure that whatever new development we approve is an improvement, both for the lake and its residents. And it's easy to get bogged down in specific rules and this and that. But what are we trying to do? We're trying to make things better. I think we all agree on that. Unfortunately, I believe the current it the evidence is the Barton's current proposal is a substantial negative for a large number of residents, as evidenced by the fact that it violates well over a dozen TRPA directives, and many of those deficiencies are not fixable in the current plan. Clearly, an alternative plan is necessary. I've already proposed one such plan. There are many others. The only counterargument I've heard is that it might cost more. Well, that's not that's not the TRPA's fault. If I submit B M Ps and they don't, they don't follow the rules, you're going to kick them back to me and say, hey, give me, you know, give me a better plan. So Barton's going to have that responsibility here, and that's okay. That's all part of the process. Most importantly, we insist on a plan that not only addresses things like helicopter noise, emergency traffic, extremely inadequate parking, and the many other issues we've previously identified in the previous parts of this process. We insist on a plan that is a benefit to the lake and the surrounding community, because right now we seem to be kind of arguing about how much of detriment is acceptable. And if y'all are wondering why you receive so much pushback, it's very, it's a very simple concept, which is what's in it for us? What's in it for the neighborhood? What's what's in it for us? Where's the benefit? Where's the employee housing? Where's the benefits to the lake? Right now, we're just sort of arguing about, you know, how bad it's allowed to get. So we want to understand why there's pushback going forward and how to solve that. That's the question you need to answer. And most importantly, throughout this process, you're the people responsible, and you have the power to require a plan that actually addresses all these things. So I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the room? Okay, seeing none, Catherine, let's go online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two hands raised online so far. First hand up is Doug Flaherty. Doug, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, Chair Ferry. Members of the committee, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanair.org. Just want to briefly talk about the last meeting and the minutes associated with the last APC meeting. I recall distinctly, and I haven't reviewed the tape, but I recall distinctly Mr. Ferry having the compassion and the concern to bring up wildfire evacuation. And I haven't reviewed the tape, but I believe he asked Mr. Hester if we could come up with some sort of an opportunity to discuss wildfire evacuation. And it's a very important question, because heretofore, no one from TRPA or the committees have raised this issue, and I just want to congratulate the chair for doing so. However, when the minutes came out, unless I missed something, there was nothing about that conversation, something that is so very critical and the number one point on the minds of of most basin residents. Yet it didn't appear in the minutes. So this continues to lead to the public perception that TRPA continues to do whatever they can to conceal the hidden danger of the public peril capacity, wildfire capacity of our roadways, evacuation capacity. And, you know, let's just all play like it doesn't exist, and maybe it'll go away. Because we all know when you actually do the wildfire analysis that you know, we're going to have to face the reality of what's happening in the Tahoe Basin and quit trying to push, you know, fifteen pounds of potato into a five-pound sack. It's dangerous. By ignoring this, you're jeopardizing the the public safety. And anyway, I just want to go on the record about the lack of of the discussion of that conversation between Mr. Ferry and Mr. Hester in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
And the last hand raised is Alan Miller. Alan, please unmute to make your comment.
Good morning. Good morning, Alan Miller, civil and environmental engineer. Can you hear me? Thank you. South Lake Tahoe. Yeah. Well, I think it's a good thing that TRPA is doing what the law requires in this instance, which is to prepare an environmental impact statement. And at the same time, just sort of looking over the scope of it, I want to say that TRPA was formed with between the with an agreement between the states of California and Nevada ratified by Congress. And there are national standards in the National Environmental Policy Act for Cumulative Effects Analysis and as well in the California Environmental Quality Act. TRPA follows neither of those. They follow their own process, which is, in my view, deficient with regard to what is required under the national and state of California requirements for cumulative effects analysis. And so I'm just going to encourage that you need to dive into those statutes and adapt TRPA's process here to include cumulative effects analyses. And I'm not seeing the clock ticking. So am I being heard?
We can hear you. Yes. We can hear you. Yes.
All right. Thank you. I don't know how much time I have left, but I'd just say a couple of things that, you know, I'm just gonna read from some guidance, determining the cumulative environmental consequences of an action requires delineating the cause and effect relationships between the multiple actions and the resources, ecosystems, and human communities of concern. Analysts must tease from the complex networks of possible interactions, the interactions, those that substantially affect the resources. Then they must describe the response of the resource to this environmental change using modeling, trends analysis, and scenario building when uncertainties are great. The significance of cumulative effects depends on how they compare with the environmental baseline and relative resource thresholds, such as regulatory standards, which I would say TRPA's thresholds are woefully insufficient. Most often, the historical context surrounding the resource is critical to developing these baselines and thresholds into supporting both imminent and future decision making. So that's, that's kind of from the NEPA side of things. There's, again, there's guidelines in the SEQUAL law. And again, TRPA with their checklist and so forth, they're, you know, they're really not getting at the issues, and they're really not assessing the cumulative effect. And so I think that's my recommendation for now. I'm very concerned with traffic bottlenecks and other things with regard to what Mr. Flaherty raised. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this morning. I do not think I will be able to attend till the end. So thank you very much. I'm just gonna leave it at that for now. I did submit written comments, and I plan to submit additional written comments before the June 6 deadline, if possible. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Alan.
Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised to comment.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you all for that. More to come. I'm gonna move us on to item four, which is our disposition of minutes. We do have a draft set of minutes from our March 12, 2025 meeting. That's on page five of your packets. Any members of the APC have any comments or questions on the minutes?
Chair, yes. I was not here for that meeting, so I'm going to refrain from approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Seeing none there. Let me just check online. Any APC members online have comments on the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
Motion to approve our minutes.
Thank you, Ellery. Do we need a second? I don't.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Young, for the second. Okay, all those, well, do we need a roll call vote on this grammar? No. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions?
I've seen.
Kate, Mr. Drew, Stacy abstaining for the minutes. Okay, thank you all. Let me move us on now to the meat of our agenda. We're gonna go to item five, and this is a public hearing. Item 5A is the APC review and comment on the notice of preparation to prepare an environmental impact statement for the Barton Health Hospital Project and South Shore Area Plan Amendments. This is at 168 US Highway 50 State Line Nevada Douglas County Assessors Parcel Numbers, 131822002114115 and 116. And this is TRPA file number ERSP 2024-1890. Information for everyone can be found on page 39 of your packets. And let me just make a note about how this was agendized for possible action. We're not really taking action today on this item. This is the beginning of the process, but that does enable APC staff to provide input to staff or the applicant for further direction on the scope of the EIS and on the later, the draft RTP. So they're not really agendized for action to the governing board. That's gonna come later, but that's just the way that these were agendized. So just to point a clarification there, this is the beginning of the NOP scoping process for the EIS. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Stock from TRPA to present on this. Hey, Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jacob Stock. I'm a senior planner with TRPA. I am working with Paul Nielsen, also of TRPA, to, to review this proposal from Barton Health and to, and to analyze the environmental impacts. Paul's not here today. He's driving out into the desert somewhere. If you've ever seen the film Fear and Loathing in Las Vegas, just imagine the opening scene of that movie, and you'll, you'll be somewhere close. So I'm here to ask for comments from the APC and the public on the scope of an environmental impact statement, or EIS, for the proposed Barton Hospital Project and related amendments to the South Shore Area Plan. This is not an action item for, for the APC. Thank you, Kate, for asking me that earlier. Instead, we just want to hear your comments and your ideas specifically on the scope of the EIS. So an EIS is TRPA's highest level of environmental review. We've received an application from Barton Health, and we need to look at that proposal and look at the environmental impacts of that proposal before we can make a determination on that. So an EIS is meant to analyze the potential impacts of a proposed project and its alternatives. It's not meant to approve or deny that project, but, but to support a decision to approve or deny that project. I'll give a brief introduction before handing it off to Dr. Clint Purvance from Barton Health for an overview of the proposal. Then we'll hear from Rob Bruick. He is the consultant working with TRPA to develop the EIS, and he'll discuss the environmental process and schedule. And, and after that presentation, we'd like to hear from APC members and from the public on the scope of the EIS. Next slide, please. So the EIS will be analyzing potential actions to develop a hospital at the site of the former lakeside inn and casino. Those actions include amendments to the South Shore Area Plan, so creating a healthcare sub-district, increasing the allowable height from 56 feet to 80 feet on a portion of the proposed project site. And just to note, this action would also, would also require an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, and modifying permissible uses in the plan to make a hospital use and allowed use in the new plan area. The EIS will also evaluate the potential impact of permitting and constructing an actual hospital on the site. So the EIS will be addressing both the plan amendments and the project itself. Next slide. Okay, here's a map of the proposed healthcare sub-district. I have a little laser pointer. See if it works. Okay. And it's not working. So I'll just talk us through it. It includes the existing Barton clinic on the mountainside of Highway 50. Um, you can see Kingsbury Grade to the south there and Kale Drive to the north. What's that? I think it's just the angle of it is the problem. Oh, yeah. It's, it's all, it's all good. I think we can, we can look at the map and, and I can narrate us through, through this tour of the proposed sub-district. So, so like I said, you can see Kingsbury Grade to the south, Kale Drive to the north, Highway 50 running through the center of the sub-district, and the proposed hospital site on the lakeside of the highway. It's important to note that the sub-district, as proposed, would include only Barton-owned properties. And that's as it's proposed now. And I'll also note that the proposed height amendment is limited to hospital uses on a portion of, of that lakeside property where the new hospital is being proposed. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the review process. Where are we in this, in this process of reviewing this proposal? Well, TRPA received a permit application from Barton in December. After initial scoping for an environmental assessment, it was determined that an EIS would be necessary for the project and plan amendments as proposed. And so that's where we are right now, in the notice of preparation and the scoping for that, that EIS, that environmental impact statement. After, after the draft and final EIS is complete, and that EIS could very likely result in changes to the proposal, Douglas County will consider the proposed amendments to the area plan, and TRPA will consider the plan amendments and the project. And so that's all I have for you guys now. I'll introduce Dr. Purvance from Barton Health to speak more about the proposed project that we'll be analyzing.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the time this morning, Chair, APC members, public. It's a privilege to be here presenting before you to talk about the project, which is vital for the health of our community. So I appreciate the work that we're doing together as a community on this project. Barton Health obviously has been in the community for a long period of time. Next slide. We're here to talk about the hospital replacement project. We've had a history of being an independent, not-for-profit community health system since 1963. We've been evolving ever since there to meet the healthcare needs of our community. That includes our residents, our tourists, and the surrounding regions. In fact, as we've evolved over time, as you'll see, we're adding services year over year, decade over decade, so more care can be provided here. We've always been known for orthopedics. We're known for a lot more than that now, as we see the community grow and those needs grow. Next slide, please. We are a bi-state organization, we're a bi-state community, and we look at our health system as one community, one health system serving that one community. And we recognize that many of us drive across that state line for business, commerce, shared services on a daily basis. Our hospital started on our California campus. We have two campuses, one in California, one in Nevada. It began in the California campus mainly when the town was first being built out after the Olympics were in Tahoe, and people started to live year-round. A lot of our infrastructure is old, and it's aging out. It's similar to the motels that you see on Highway 50, the single-story motels that are now 60-plus years old. That infrastructure, as it ages, and we've done a very good job at maintaining that infrastructure for the community's health and for clinical services, does need to be replaced, and we're at that juncture. We also know that, you've heard about seismic laws and regulations and proposals. Seismic is very complex, but to simplify it, there are certain requirements coming 2030 that some of our facilities will not practically meet. Other facilities, which are newer, can meet, and we're working on upgrading those facilities so that they still have useful life and can meet seismic requirements. When you look at our California campus, a picture of it here just shows that it's built out. It's surrounded by various owned lands, state lands, Spartan lands that have existing infrastructure on it for the care of our community. And I'm gonna come back to this in the future, but just know that we've built the campus out over time, as we have evolved over time, in order to expand for healthcare needs. Now we're faced with replacing some of that infrastructure that is old, and it is end of life. Efficient construction without patient care disruption is our goal, and providing community services with a continuation of those services ever expanding is the end goal. Next slide. We take a look at the lakeside inn and casino. Many of us spent some time there over the years, and so it's not hard to remember what was there previously. Barton Health, when we purchased this parcel, was committed to having healthcare resources for the community on that site, although we were not determined what location or what types of services would be there initially. But it was too valuable of a parcel for healthcare delivery, being close to our mountain campus, which has expanded over the years and present there for approximately 20 years of services. We are committed to the Lake Tahoe environment in this project. In fact, if you looked at the lakeside inn parcel, you would see that the preTRPA build of that parcel covered nearly 100% of that parcel. It was a very disturbed site. There was excessive land coverage. The height of that facility was 63 feet. It had another 12 feet of basements, and in some areas, it had another five feet deep that intercepted groundwater. Pump that groundwater in daylight at that groundwater, something that's not permissible in code, that we corrected with the demolition permit in the project. So we've seen significant improvements just in the environment since Barton has purchased it and has done the demolition. We are going to focus on environmental improvements on that project. It include not only groundwater, but the proposed project also reduces coverage, and it meets, we believe, scenic thresholds, and our goal are to meet and exceed where we can the scenic thresholds and the other thresholds, environmental thresholds and goals of the TRPA. We share common goals there. We believe that there'll be a significant improvement in VMTs and opportunities for transportation that really makes sense on this parcel, and I'll speak more about that. Newer facilities are also much more efficient than older facilities. So if you're running a 60 or 70-year-old facility, whether it's a rec center, it's a motel, or it's a hospital, they're not designed efficiently. And this project will also help us to reduce greenhouse gases in the region. Next slide, please. This is really just a layout of a population-based slide to show kind of where our population is located. The population around the urban core, and we don't define, I don't, Barton doesn't define the urban core, but it is defined. And this project parcel is in the urban core. The urban core is where a lot of the population, both resident and tourists, are staying. There is a significant impact in the urban core for healthcare and healthcare needs. And co-locating a hospital, an emergency department closer to the urban core may actually be better for our community overall, be better for those who live closest to it in proximity, certainly from ambulance traffic, as those ambulances can have shorter transport times, deliver patients, and get back into service for many of those members that are likely to use our ER. In particular, the Bijou State Line Neighbors in our Community Health Needs Assessment is one neighborhood that actually faced transportation challenges, and they're more likely to use our emergency department than other populations. Today, they actually have transportation via Lakeland to our Nevada campus, but not to our California campus. And that's because the California campus is not near the urban core. It's out at the edge of the county, so it's not where the population base is, we hope, and support more transportation to the California campus as well. Next slide. We are committed to California as we plan to move the hospital to Nevada. When we look at the California campus, you saw some of that built-out environment. Some of those buildings are new, like our Center for Orthopedics Wellness and Performance. That will continue with specialty care, rehabilitation, and performance care. Our Community Health Center, which is a vital piece of our community, our rural health clinic serves the most, those in some of the greatest healthcare needs, with some of the greatest social determinants of health and disparities, receive care at that rural health clinic. They're gonna continue to receive care. Barton will be investing in doubling the size of that rural health clinic. That project is starting this year. That's a $6 million enhancement to that campus. We'll have continued primary care, specialty care, and repurposing of infrastructure on that campus with plans to add additional healthcare services to the tune of 20-plus million dollars in the future to the California campus, all for keeping primary care, specialty care, outpatient ambulatory services, which is approximately 90% of our business on a daily basis. It's not all in the hospital. It's all in the ambulatory these days and clinics, making sure we have a very extensive community hub on the California campus for those who are closest to that campus. You'll also see that we'll add an urgent care to that campus as well. We have an urgent care on our state line campus today. When the hospital is built and relocates to the Nevada campus, our acute care ER, our trauma center, inpatient surgical beds, that moves over to the Nevada campus. And the urgent care that's on the Nevada campus goes over to the California campus. That again provides access to care for acute care services, much like we're doing today. The advantage of building in Nevada Greenfield is many, but an additional advantage is that we can provide more services. Part of the plan is to include space for other services, oncology, cardiovascular medicine. As our population ages, we know our demographics to 55, an older population is growing. They need different healthcare services, and we want to add those in to our future plans, both well today and in the future. Next slide, please. Here's a layout just of the California Campus Acute Care Hospital and Long-Term Care Hospital. And part of the EIS project, or part of the EIS process, is a no-project alternative. And I want to spend a little time talking about a no-project alternative. If you have end-of-life facilities and facilities that can't practically be either seismically retrofitted, added on, or adjusted, what do you do as a health system? Or adjusted, what do you do as a health system? Well, if you're confined to one campus, you remove the end-of-life facilities and you build Greenfield up. That's the most efficient way to do it. The challenge with that. Is that there's two hospitals on that campus in this diagram, in this, um, picture. Aerial photo that you have in front of you, the L shape that you see. On the left of the screen is a forty-eight-bed long-term care resident hospital. That's where forty-eight of our long-term care nursing care residents. These are people who live in Tahoe can no longer live at home. They need nursing care. They stay usually until the end of their life. Their families are here. Their loved ones get to visit them. They get to be a part of our community. We don't have a solution for the movement of that long-term care facility. Its end-of-life needs to be demolished and replaced. Without rebuilding or transferring that to another area. Rebuilding on this site would disrupt and tearing that down would disrupt as we rebuild for at least five to seven years. In that snowflake building, which is adjacent to the L shape, there are roughly twenty different departments of essential services that support both the hospitals. The long-term care hospital on the left, the acute care hospital, which is. Not with the red, um, box around it. That's the two-story existing hospital. And those twenty support departments, um, if they had to be relocated or put in modules or. Um, otherwise just removed, it would have significant impacts on what we can do in the acute care hospital during a construction phase on the California campus. If we diminish or decrease the opportunity for healthcare services, healthcare providers, their families, they leave the area. That includes physicians. We estimate the impact to be. Anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty members of our team that may be lost. And that's a huge environment, not, it's a huge economic impact to the, um, to the community. And it'd be very difficult to recruit and get talent back after a five-to-seven-year period. But that's not the main story. The story is. And the reality is, is if you disrupt that campus without efficient building, we don't provide services to the community and that's what we're here for. We were born out of a community need and we want to maintain that community need and meet those patient needs. Next slide, please. You saw the schematic. This is the proposed sub, uh, healthcare sub-district, uh, on our state line campus, the mountainside and the lakeside. Uh, the current height is fifty-six feet. Barton's proposing an eighty feet. We've modified. Um, plans to submit for this proposed project from eighty-five to eighty feet. Um, we've also made modifications just to look at how traffic flows and transportation and parking is allowed on these sites. The advantage of having. Um, a campus that crosses Highway fifty with a, a proposed skywalk across it is that. There's ample parking on both sides and, um, public and employees can park. They can go across safely Highway fifty. Um, from a campus on the mountainside, which is primarily outpatient ambulatory to a hospital, um, which was proposed to being built. This is also a center for transportation. The transportation hub in state line is at this location. We propose to keep that in place so that if you're part of that transportation network and you're coming into the state line area. Having a hospital at the transportation hub, um, is very efficient for the community and increases access to care. Next slide. And, um, looking at planning for a new healthcare system, it's going to be a bigger facility than what we have from a square footage standpoint. However, it'll be approximately the same number of beds. And the beds will vary depending upon, um, which area of the hospital they're located. As an example, OB, ICU, inpatient, surgical. Um, but there's roughly fifty-five beds that's, that are being proposed. It's a state-of-the-art expanded. Uh, facility so that all of our private, all of our patient rooms are private patient rooms. This is better for the healing of patients. It's what you would want versus the hospital we have today where. Many of our patients are staying in the same room, two patients per room in some circumstances. There's expanded opportunities for orthopedic and surgical care. Our ORs today, which were designed thirty years ago in the newer hospital that we have the ORs in. The, the modern-day ORs are three times the size. That's in order to efficiently handle the equipment, the robotics, the things that we actually do on that campus. But make it more efficient and, um, and add additional opportunities for growth, um, for our community. I'm an emergency physician by background, and so when I started in the emergency room here back in nineteen ninety-nine, it opened nineteen ninety-six. It was a modern-day ER. And, um, and it operated that way for quite some time. However, it's a level-three trauma center now. Our ER is going from six thousand square feet to sixteen to twenty thousand square feet. That's the community need. We don't have that space on the California campus to build out. In addition to that, um, lab, radiology, um, pathology, um, pharmacology, um, all of these areas are underbuilt, will increase in size. For the needs of our community, um, many of those departments doubling in size. The design also allows for us to care for some of the most needy of our patients that can't receive care here, the oncology patients which have to go off the mountain. We want to keep them local. We're going to build more oncology into the system today, but we envision having. A cancer care system and center on this campus. So that we can care for those patients and keep them local. And then obviously cardiovascular medicine is incredibly important as well. There are many advances in cardiovascular medicine. We want a, a center for cardiovascular care, um, in this facility as well. We have received feedback and in the proposed project, we moved the helipad, which was once located on the. Northwest corner to further up Kale Drive. You'll see it just labeled helipad. Now that there's, um, the opportunity to make some changes, we've made those changes. We'll listen and, um. Receive feedback and continue to make changes on the project. I'd also like to point out on Laura Drive, there used to be two cutouts for, um, guests of the Lakeside Inn. And their employees to enter and exit off of Laura Drive. There was also a four-H entrance and then there were several entrances off of Kale Drive. And then several off of Highway fifty. In our proposed project, we proposed no entrances, um, to the project off of Laura Drive. Doing our best to maintain the nature of that, um, street as a, um, local neighborhood street. Next slide, please. We are committed to Lake Tahoe and in the environment. Um, we're proud to be part of the Kale Complete Street Project. Um. Environmental stewardship is very important for many of our employees and physicians. Um, we were able to, to help close a funding gap for that project to start. We've also been asked to, for our parcel to be the lakeside parcel to be used for staging for the Highway fifty. And the kale projects, which we're happy to accommodate. Um, those projects, um, are important water mitigation projects, uh, for the region and Barton's project. Um, works within those projects as well to improve. Uh, water mitigation in the region. We're excited to kick those, see those kickoff this summer, be part of that. For the neighborhood, for the community and, um, and for the lake. We recognize partners like the Tahoe Fund that we worked with for many years on other environmental projects, the Johnson Meadow Project, um. Getting that into conservancy, um, hands. We work with the US Forest Service, um, on a very unique partnership around nature as medicine. We call it vitamin N. We're going to continue to do that. Our program here is one that's been highlighted in Washington DC with our US Forest Service partners. Um, as being a, a unique opportunity, um, for the outdoor healing, uh, to, um, promote and help healing for our patients. We have a raid meadow, uh, cleanup. We've also been talking about the US Forest Service about the raid meadow and what impacts might be there and how Barton can be a partner. Um, in potential, um, opportunities in that raid meadow. We'll continue to be good environmental stewards and work for. Environmental, um, projects, um, in the basin and around this project. Next slide, please. This is a schematic that just shows a proposed project. Um, it's a gateway, this project, this, uh, parcel is a gateway to the South Shore from the north. And it's meant to be a gateway project. Um, it's proposed to step up, um, from and use the natural, um, uh, decline in the parcel from Highway fifty. Um, to step up, um, in height, so it's not. Um, obtrusive on Highway fifty and look like a large strip mall, but yet. Look like a community gathering spot. In fact, there's many spaces. In the design for the community to gather amphitheaters, amphitheaters, walkways, bike paths, transportation connections. Um, so that people can get around a cafe, people can, um, dine at, um, walk down to, um, the beaches of Lake Tahoe from the site if they choose. Um, but more importantly, it's also designed not only to fit into the natural character of our. Lake Tahoe environment and support that, but to put health and wellness for our community in the front. Front and center in the community. And know that that's what we stand for as a community. It's also designed from a healing design standpoint to bring a lot of the outdoors in. Um, so that our patients have that outdoor healing opportunity. Next slide. We've started this process several years ago. We continue the process, but about a year ago, we began to receive public input. We've had, uh, over a hundred meetings. Now you can see them listed here and every week it grows. Um, internally with our employees, our physicians, um, our nurses, um, our care teams, our support teams. Externally with partners, community outreach, um, two GID meetings, um, you heard, heard from both of them or from members of both of them today. Uh, media channels, um, websites, um. Our goal is to have as much information as we can have out there so the public and. Those key stakeholders can provide feedback, make this a great project. And we look forward to more feedback as we move forward. Last slide. In summary, I just want to say thank you very much for your time. And consideration as we move forward with EIS, Barton completely supports obviously where we are today in the EIS project or process with the project. Um, we are certainly one, uh, community. We're a by-state community. We, uh, will continue, much like many health systems do, to operate out of multiple campuses for the care of the community. And this is really a time from a generational standpoint, the first hospital being built. You know, six generations ago, this is a time we can rebuild. And we can look forward to what we'll have here for our community for generations to come. I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pur Vance. Appreciate that overview. Um, so Jacob, are we going to go to Mr. Bruick next?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to introduce Rob Bruick real, real quick. Uh, Rob is the consultant hired by TRPA to perform. The environmental impact statement. He is working for TRPA, but his expenses are being reimbursed by Barton Health. And so he'll share a little bit about himself and his experience in the Tahoe Basin and talk about the EIS process and, uh, schedule moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. Rob Bruick, uh, manager of Howgie Bruick Associates. Uh, as Jacob mentioned, my firm's been selected to prepare the environmental analysis now in EIS for the project. Uh, we also, uh, are hiring five subcontractors to deal with several of the key, um. Technical areas that we'll need to be addressing in the document. Uh, I've got about a thirty-five-year, um, experience here, working in the basin, uh, some of the similar. Studies I've worked on in the past, uh, Homewood Master Plan, uh, the Toddle-Biltmore Project now called Waldorf Astoria. Uh, Heavenly Ski Resort Master Plans, the Tahoe South Event Center. So, uh, some other similar, uh, urban development, um. Big EIS documents in my past. Um, as mentioned during the introduction, the purpose today is to solicit comments from both, uh. Members of the APC and the public on the EIS preparation. The, the content that we studied in that document. Uh, following the scoping period, we'll, uh, we'll submit a summary of the comments we've received both. Back in January and February for the EA that was originally going to be prepared. Plus any additional comment you get during this notice of preparation period. As documented on this slide. The EIS will include a detailed description of the project. A purpose and need, potentially significant impacts. And then ways to potentially mitigate those, including alternatives and other mitigation measures. Uh, agencies that were consulted, plus all of the other TRPA, uh, issue areas that are identified in the code and the, uh, IEC. Next slide. Uh, to date, we've identified numerous key issues that we're going to study in the EIS. This is, um. The, the list, uh, that we've summarized for you today. Uh, many of these issues, as I mentioned before, were raised, uh, during the scoping period that we previously, uh, held. When we thought we were going to prepare an environmental assessment. Uh, the EIS will, uh, analyze each of these issues. And, uh, all the other resource areas that are, uh, also listed in the TRPA IEC. Uh, water quality, uh, impacts from sediment leaving the parcel, stormwater runoff, uh, high groundwater, uh, collection and treatment. And discharge from the site. Those will all be studied in the document. We have, uh, technical sub consultants, uh, that have got the great experience here in the basin. Will be working on those issues as part of our team. Uh, biological resources, we'll be looking at noise and other physical impacts to wildlife and their habitat in nearby locations, including raid meadow. Scenic, we'll be definitely looking at the scenic threshold viewpoints, including roadways and wreck areas in the area. Uh, from new structures, from the proposed increase to height. Uh, the evaluation will also consider impacts related to adjacent land uses under the neighborhood compatibility topic. Land use, we're going to be looking at impacts from changes to the list permissible uses that Jacob mentioned for the healthcare sub-district. Uh, that would eliminate the need for special use permit for the hospital. So the EIS will study those, uh, findings that are required. Uh, currently under the existing code. Recreation, we, uh, heard concerns about, uh, potential impacts to the adjacent, uh, Forest Service managed raid meadow and, uh, nature trail. Uh, from increased use and activity at the project site. We'll study those impacts, uh, as well as new noise sources associated with operation of the hospital, including. Uh, ER, um, ambulance trips and, uh, the helipad. Geology and soils will be one of the key impacts, uh, here in the basin. Definitely looking at land coverage and the stormwater runoff we mentioned already. Uh, we'll also be looking at excavation of soils, how that might impact groundwater. And from the import of fill that may be needed to, uh, build the foundations for the proposed structures and how that'll impact surface and groundwater. Resources. We'll be consulting or asking, uh, the Washoe Tribe to consult on the project, um, given the site's location near Burke Creek. Uh, under neighborhood compatibility, we'll be looking at impacts, uh, related to compatibility with adjacent uses such as, uh. The residential, uh, the recreational uses, uh, those types of neighborhood compatibility, uh, topics. Include traffic, noise, light, shading from the buildings. Um, population and housing, uh, the socioeconomic impacts associated with new employment. Housing demand in the project facility, how that might impact, uh, the existing neighborhood. Transportation will, we'll be looking at the typical resources there of trip generation level, service and vehicle miles traveled resulting from the new hospital. Um, constructed on the location of the former lakeside inn and casino. Impacts of parking, supply and management, response to demand generated by the hospital use. Uh, air quality, we'll look at all the emissions from both construction and eventual operations of the facility. Uh, greenhouse gases will be done, uh, analysis will be done as part of that air quality analysis. And compared to established, uh, thresholds that TRPA will use. Uh, noise sources and other large, um, um, focus of the comments we got originally on the EA. Uh, we'll be looking at operation of the helipad. We've got a consultant, uh, that specializes in noise work. That will be working on this. He's worked on other, uh, helipad. Helicopter operations on, uh, similar projects. Uh, cumulative, um, at impacts, uh, we'll be definitely studying, um, impacts of the Barton project and how it might relate to other. Known or foreseeable or recently constructed, for example, the event center, uh, projects in the area. And finally, off-site impacts, uh, we'll also be looking at potential impacts related to moving these uses from the California campus to Nevada. Next slide, please. Uh, the scoping perga, period began with the release of the, uh, notice preparation last week. The formal scoping period will close, uh, June sixth. Each of the comments we received for the previous scoping on the EA, uh, will be included in our scoping summary report. And, uh, don't need to be re-submitted. Um, next slide, please. Uh, we're going to ask that people mail or email their comments to TRPA directly. Uh, to be incorporated into the scoping summary report that will be, uh, available in late June. The, uh, email address is on this slide. Um, it's also on the notice preparation on the TRPA and county websites. And if you're offering new comments today, uh, we also encourage you to submit those in writing. Now I'm going to do a quick summary, uh, starting on the next slide of the project, although we've already seen, um. This information from Jacob and Dr. Pur Vance. So this is just the. Uh, again, the map of the proposed healthcare district. Um, I think Jacob's already covered the district, so we'll move on to the next slide. Uh, the proposed, uh, hospital site. Project, uh, includes development of, uh. Both the SS, sorry, the South Shore Area Plan Amendments. It's a Douglas County TRPA area plan for the area. And the proposed hospital facilities. Um, as we'll see when we look at the next slide, the project includes approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet. Of hospital building, which will include a level-three trauma center, surgery department. Obstetrics, labor and delivery, intensive care, skilled nursing and all the other supporting services. Parkings provide on two levels next to the hospital building for patients and visitors. And in a separate surface lot for employees. The project also includes a helipad above the entrance to the ER off of Kale Drive. Pedestrian overpass to the existing Barton campus east of US fifty. And outdoor gathering spaces and walkways in numerous locations, including the area next to fifty and Kale Drive. And also along Laura Drive behind the building. Next slide, thank you. The next three slides provide, uh, some building elevations. They're, they're a little difficult to see, um. But they, uh, the first slide documents views from the US fifty side of the building. Um, the second slide, excellent. Documents views from Laura Drive and the Kale Drive sides. And as you can note, see in the document, um. The highest port, portion of the building is the center of the building. And, uh, it steps up to that height. And uh, it steps up to that height, up to eighty feet, as proposed in the South Shore Area Plan Amendments. Finally, the third slide of the elevations, this one shows um, a cross-section through the project with the existing grade shown in the blue dash line. I don't think it's very easy to see that, but what I can point out is um, that the proposed underground parking or first-level parking will require excavation into the existing grade uh, on the portion of the project site closest to US Highway fifty. And so we are studying the existing groundwater um, most carefully in that location. Next slide, please. As Jacob already mentioned, uh, Barton's proposing several area plan amendments to facilitate approval of their proposed project. The first is the creation of the healthcare district, which we've shown on the map several times, uh, changing the list of permissible uses within the boundary of that district to add hospital as an allowed use, uh, which eliminates the need for the um, project to make special use findings. And then increasing maximum building height to eighty feet for a portion of the healthcare district on the west side of fifty or the north side of fifty, uh, where the former lakeside uh, in a casino was located. Next slide. Uh, we'll wrap up with the uh, review of the proposed timeline. Uh, after the NOP circulation period ends June sixth, we will prepare a scoping summary report, which will be released uh, for public review. The end of June, we'll begin preparing the draft EIS and have that ready uh, for public circulation at the end of this year with the goal of uh, responding to comments we get, making any potential changes to the analysis that are required and um, releasing the final EIS in early twenty-twenty-six with hearings to begin thereafter. And finally, last slide. This concludes our presentation, and I believe Jacob will uh, provide a wrap-up and turn it over to Mission. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I actually have nothing to wrap up, so I'll just hand it over to uh, to our chair for um, comments and discussion.
Great. Thank you to the Barton team and, and TRPA staff and Rob for all that information. That's great. Okay, now it's our turn, uh, APC, and that'll be the public's turn to weigh in. So why don't we start with APC member comments, questions in the room, and then we're gonna go online. So we'll first go to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Steve Bisher, I sit here representing the Tahoe Transportation District, but along with all my colleagues, we have a much broader scope of interest and comments on various items that've come before us. Uh, and my question would be for Rob, maybe supplemented by uh, our legal counsel. So in the public comment this morning, there were several references to NEPA and CEQA, but those don't necessarily apply to a Nevada side project in this case. Although you are talking about the EIS covering some of the changes in California, does that make any difference in terms of the EIS scope?
We recognize that with the hospital um, uses moving from the California campus to the Nevada, we have to address those um, items such as traffic that relate to moving uh, those uses, even though those are located in California. But the physical impacts of the project are all located, at least the changes that warrant environmental review are located in Nevada. What we understand for California is there's just gonna be demolition of part of a building, and they're gonna leave that as open space, so it won't be a new use there. And uh, I'll let Graham uh, weigh in as well.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah, just to answer that even more directly, it's CEQA and NEPA do not apply here. There's no um, discretionary action by federal agency or a state agency. So we're in TRPA's sole discretion here, which we apply our environmental review process.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the clarification. I wanted to make sure that we all understood that and the public understood that as well. Thank you.
Good question, Steve. Mr. Drew.
So follow-up on that. So then, off-site impacts that you mentioned, Rob, how, how are you gonna analyze those? Like, how are they gonna be considered? Because Graham, if it's, if there's not a linkage, then I think it's important to clarify how those off-site impacts are gonna be considered within the environmental document.
Well, even though there's no like city or state requirement for CEQA, the TRPA document still requires we analyze the potential impacts of the facility, no matter where it's located. And so we'll be looking at potential changes to trip generation, no matter where they are, if they're in Nevada or California. And uh, um, where employees will, will work now. If, if it's used to be in California, now it's Nevada. I'll have to be looking at uh, those trips and where they're coming from. That would be one of the ideas of an off-site impact. We will still identify if there's a reduction in land coverage at the California campus and how that might change uh, water quality, for example. That would be an off-site impact as a result of the project, though not a uh, permissible or a discretionary impact that would be analyzed under CEQA. I guess that's an example.
So it sounds like traffic and potential physical changes at the California campus would be the two primary things. That would be the off-site impacts that would be addressed.
I'd, I'd say another potential uh, off-site impact uh, would be um, like shading from the building on adjacent residential areas or roads. That could be considered an off-site impact, uh, impacts to potential wildlife at Rave Meadow from noise at the site. We could count that as an off-site impact, although we could also put it under wildlife.
Yeah, okay. So you, those, those are the things that have been considered. I guess, building on that, then what alternatives have been brought um, forward already, or what are being contemplated in terms of alternatives?
We don't have them written up yet. We're gonna wait until we get the uh, conclusion of the uh, scoping period to do that, but the categories we think that we might look at are an alternative design. Where the buildings or entrance to parking or access would be in different locations potentially based on potential significant impacts.
Yep.
Another might be following existing codes and plans and developing an alternative at the Nevada campus that doesn't require code amendments. And then, of course, we'll be looking at the no-action alternative and what would happen should there be no Nevada hospital site.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think that's important. This being scoping is, um, we heard a lot of input already this morning. Um, some of it was related to things that uh, the public would like to see scoped, and others were opinions about the project, but scoping isn't about opinions of the project. It's about what we wanna see in the environmental document. So there were a number that I noted. I just wanted to, for the record, uh, get those in. So traffic, noise, parking, community compatibility and groundwater were the things I heard this morning that were of interest to be scoped. Uh, the last question I had was about special use findings. You had mentioned, um, if you make the amendment to the area plan, then it eliminates the need for a special use permit. Will the same findings have to be made to make that amendment to the area plan that you would have to consider for a special use permit? Um, so will the same criteria be applied to make the amendment to the area plan that you would have to apply to get the special use permit?
Yeah, Jacob's stock for the record. I can make, uh, I can take a crack at that one. So in order to make an area plan, there, there are findings required to make an area plan amendment. And so those findings would apply to the area plan amendment, but not the special use findings. So you don't have to make the special use findings to amend the area plan. You have to make the area plan amendment findings. Um, that said, uh, you know, we've discussed in the scope uh, through, through the EA process. Um, it was suggested, you know, that we look at uh, at some of these impacts that would be analyzed in, in, in a neighborhood compatibility analysis, analysis of uh, neighborhood compatibility findings for a special use permit, to analyze those in uh, the environmental document, so that we're, we still have um, some, some analysis, some documentation of those impacts at the plan level.
Thank you. Cause the reason I ask that question is, I've been asked by multiple people to clarify that in terms of if it's not gonna be addressed directly in the environmental document, maybe there's a separate memo that occurs that identifies and clarifies this specific issue, because I've gotten several emails and phone calls about this particular issue.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. APC members in the room, Jennifer.
Thanks. I had some um, scoping thoughts, so I appreciate that last discussion. Um, and I appreciate hearing that um, like, alternative design, you know, could be part of the alternatives, um, because I was um, I was contemplating, um, you know, ways to address things like, um, you know, shading and height uh, without maybe necessarily changing um, the, the, the quote-unquote rules of the game. Um, so yeah, what might it look like if there was more coverage but less height or something like that? So um, uh, that was one uh, area that it's crossed my mind, as well as um, the concerns about Laura Drive being a, a fairly small residential street, and although there's um, not intended to be a lot of traffic, it doesn't sound like on that street and try to maintain its rural nature. There is um, currently a, a parking lot um, that looks like you can only get to on Laura Drive. So, you know, if that were the case, does Laura Drive need to be um, you know, widened or something um, in order to better accommodate um, what could occur um, in that, in that very localized neighborhood? Um, so those are a couple of thoughts I had, in addition to um, the location of the helipad and the community impacts of that. So those are, those are the things that are on my mind this morning.
Thanks, Jennifer. Stacy?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I will, um, won't repeat everything. I fully support everything that um, has already been said, and I do appreciate the alternative, looking at, at design, you know, alternative designs to address the neighbors' concerns, but also I'm hoping that the parking lot, um, that is, I guess it's to the southwest, um, that it be looked at for, you know, possibly structures above it, you know, just kind of um, I guess, you know, kill two birds with one stone, right? So you have parking and then, cause you already have that coverage. Um, so that would be something I would also think should be looked at with alternative designs, um, which could then maybe um, reduce some of the impacts of the campus design as it is um, designed today. Um, and then just again, uh, transportation, but um, also um, I just want to state for the record that um, affordable housing is also a critical component, and so just wanna make sure that that is being looked into as well um, relative to the project's proposal. So, thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Other APC members, Hitch?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I just had a couple of questions related to scoping. I was uh, reading the um, staff report and the scoping co- the areas that are being scoped. And under Public Service Utilities, I just wanted to confirm that um, it says that issues related to potential loss of access to healthcare services, including potential access Nevada healthcare facilities for Medicare recipients will be analyzed in the draft EIS. Just
Yes, confirmed.
Um, and then the other one, the parking lot that Stacy uh, references, that employee park, is that employee parking that's coming off of the four-H Camp Road?
Yes, the proposal is, um, there's two different parking lots. One is closer to the uh, hospital building. It's two levels below and above, and then there's the secondary parking that's near uh, four-H Camp Road in Laura that's accessible by Kell, then Laura, then four-H Camp Road, and that's uh, identified as an employee parking lot.
And in your traffic and circulation um, section, I assume you're gonna um, study the potential impacts on the local service, uh, cause I see there's potential conflicts there for left turns onto four-H Camp Road from uh, from US fifty, because the turn lane for making left up to Kingsbury Grade basically extends past four-H, and so there's a conflict there.
That's an identified issue already from previous scoping uh, concerns about um, either patients or employees using uh, the four-H Camp Road out to Highway fifty.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, John. Others in the room? Would you like to go, Hillary?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I understood this item was our opportunity to provide comments to the scoping, so I really appreciate the opportunity. I'll add to that. Seems like you have a lot of the um, hot topics already covered, so I won't review those again. But it just occurred to me, um, as members of the public, we're talking about emergency vehicles that they will likely use um, Highway fifty as a corridor, um, and through the casino corridor, that, that can be a well-populated area, especially um, at night. And so I thought uh, perhaps um, additional analysis on public health and safety, and I recognize the irony of saying that, given that this is a hospital proposal. Um, but I thought that that could be um, of benefit to review. Um, also, just stating the obvious, I thought that um, that was um, a great idea to include a pedestrian bridge to help promote that access across Highway fifty. Um, but given that the um, the, the members who are going to be served at this facility may be dealing with um, you know, pretty significant health concerns. I would hope that it would be well-designed um, to accommodate them um, and, and for all seasons, not just for summer use. And then finally, um, we heard a lot of comments today from members of the public regarding neighborhood compatibility, so I would just want to ensure that there really is some good analysis um, locally to the surrounding community regarding traffic and circulation, parking, noise, shadow and shading. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Stoller. James, would you like to go?
Thank you. For scoping, I wanna jump on the bandwagon about uh, housing. Um, both campuses seem large enough to accommodate some type of workforce housing, and it's a hot, hot topic for us right now. So just wanna know if the plan and uh, or analysis uh, thinks about that as far as how it affects VMT and also the workforce. Do we have data on um, Barton's workforce? How many are out of the area and come over from Carson or down from Incline or uh, other areas? Cause that affects VMT as well, and also what their housing situation is, if that population is somehow recorded. Uh, the second thing, we're always accused of uh, ignoring wildfire and evacuation. If we can make that part of the scope to, to ensure that we've analyzed if we had to evacuate the hospital. This is a better location if there's advantages to being on fifty and uh, and the grade, if it's easier to evacuate, and also um, in case of wildfire, the resiliency of this place versus uh, the current campus. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Steve, do you wanna jump in again? We do have a couple of hands up, so why don't I go to them? Thanks, Steve. Okay, APC members online. I have, I see uh, Ms. Cyber would like to jump in, and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Young. So Ashley, why don't we go to you first?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Ashley Cyber from the Forest Service, for the record. Um, we provided, you know, quite a few comments on scoping, so I won't, you know, go into too much detail in, you know, all of the comments that were provided. I think there's been a pretty good summary today. We definitely have concerns um, on the impact of the, the rec site, you know, adjacent to the proposed facility, the Rave Meadow area. That area has um, you know, it's its own site, but it's also a gateway to Lake Tahoe. It's one of the only areas in that location where the public can access uh, Lake Tahoe. And then there's the popular Nevada Beach Campground in vicinity as well. So we provided comments related to visuals, the impact on recreation at the site, both you know, the impact on the regular or, or you know, the, the recreationists who are currently there, as well as then what the impact will be when this new facility goes in and there's the opportunity for, you know, visitors to use uh, the Rave Meadow area and the La Mota Trail, which is the um, unpaved trail, as well as the state line to state line paved bike path there, which um, you know, if the, if that is the location of the hospital, that would be a great, you know, community asset uh, to that facility, but just making sure that we are properly analyzing what that impact would be. Some of those impacts being sound, both from the facility itself, from the ambulances, from the um, overhead flights. Uh, we talked about the, the visuals. The transportation impacts as far as the conflicts we could see with the, you know, we could see with the, you know, pretty much everybody entering off of Kale Drive, including the ambulances, you know, staff, visitors. And the conflict with that parking lot right there at the, uh, junction of Kale Drive and highway fifty. So we provided those comments, um, on scoping. And that was sort of, you know, in the role of the Forest Service. And so I wanted to provide a couple of additional comments today, just sort of as a general APC member based on, on what I, you know, heard today from the scoping summary. A couple of the comments related to the no action alternative. Um, I have a, a question that doesn't necessarily be, need to be answered today, but a question just for consideration and would need a little bit of, I think, explanation is there's this discussion about some of the requirements coming up in twenty thirty for seismic. And my question would be is essentially, you know, if nothing was done, if we're talking the no action alternative here, do those facilities actually like, you know, the state or, or federal or whatever, um, regulation you're referencing, does that come in and say, you know, on January first, twenty thirty, your facility is shut down? Or does that mean you're no longer in compliance and you have, so, you know, there are requirements for you to bring yourself into compliance? So that would be a, a question that I have related to the no action alternative. And then this relates to the no action alternative, but also to the alternatives. Because what is being discussed so far sounds like no action alternative and then the action alternative being at the site. And then maybe there's, you know, multiple action alternatives or configurations of things at that particular site. But I would also question whether it would be prudent or, you know, essentially what would happen if there was no facility? Let's say there was no other site available here in Tahoe and you actually did have to improve on that site. What would that look like? Because while it may be more expensive, it may take more time, those types of things, it does seem to be a viable alternative. You know, other facilities around other places might not have the benefit of another site. And so they would be looking at, you know, have, what, what are we gonna do here? And so I think that seems in my mind to be a valid alternative to take a look at here. If for nothing else, that I think it would do a, a good job of showing a little bit more justification. If it is, you know, if that is the, the final site that's chosen there on highway fifty, very clearly shows the trade offs between, you know, what would happen if you actually had to do this at that site versus moving to another site. Um, and then I think I think that's the majority of the, the comments and, and questions that I had, um, outside of the comments that we already submitted on the scoping package. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cyber. Appreciate that. We can, maybe we can answer some of these questions when we come back to you after we hear from APC members. But, okay, let's go to Mr. Young and then we'll go to Mr. Hill.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I've always seen certain institutions like a hospital, schools, sometimes public park, sometimes a major employer. As a, those are the cornerstone institutions of our communities. Those are the places where all of us can have the shared experience of the lowest parts of our lives and the highest parts of our lives, the, the mundane and the, and the normal. Those are the institutions that make our communities. And they, it's critical that they all maintain and nurture a future vision of themselves. It's, it's critical to the community that all of these types of institutions continually think about their future and how to maintain themselves as, as that cornerstone of our community. And not let themselves decline and decay to the point that it's almost too late. So I want to applaud Barton for doing that. It's an important step forward, um, for everybody, um, in the community, uh, uh, that Barton is thinking like this. So with that said, I want to recognize that, you know, my background as a planner looks at this and says, this is gonna have local impacts, um, significant local impact. And we've talked about a lot of them today. I'm very confident that the EIS is gonna do a good job of looking at the, uh, uh, a pretty comprehensive arc of these scope of these impacts. But the one thing that I can't really quite get off my mind is the, the impact on other properties wanting to do, wanting to redevelop because of this investment. This is a significant investment in a certain area. You have a neighbor right there, Barton has a neighbor right there on fifty that's been there for a very long time. There are other neighbors. Uh, this, this could stimulate, um, uh, other redevelopment and other ideas for other land uses that may or may not be allowed in that particular area. And this is the type of, of redevelopment in a, in a local area that can really spur other people, other landowners to want to do something similar or to want to redevelop and invest in their properties as well. So I don't know if that's just something that we should be thinking about. Last thing I want to be doing is telling Douglas County planners how to think. They are, they're very competent. I have a lot of respect for them. But it seems like something that, that, that we may want to consider as an impact of this project. The, uh, the, the impact of, um, wanting to spur other redevelopment in the area. So I don't know how that could be included in this scope or even if it should. But it's really the thing that I find myself thinking about the most that we haven't talked about is how are the, the neighbors, both north and south, going to start thinking about what land uses they might like to have instead of what they currently have today? How they might like to reinvest or do something new with their properties? And how look, how, how this may spur a, a kind of, uh, uh, a redevelopment in general throughout this little, um, micro area. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it and I'm enjoying the conversation. Take care.
Thanks, Eric. Mr. Hill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to, um, say first of all, that, uh, it's really good presentation. And I'm very much enjoying the conversation by APC and I appreciate the, the comments from the public as well. One of the, um, things that, uh, most of my questions have been answered. But one thing I'll be paying particularly close attention to moving forward is just the impact to, uh, to groundwater possibly in the area. It's my impression that there are some areas that do have high groundwater there. And when there's talking about, when there's discussion about subgrade, um, parking, things like that, I will be paying close attention to. And also just the connectivity and the compatibility with the, with the local area and the, and the neighborhood. So I know there's a lot more information to, to come. So I will, um, more than anything, just to comment that, that are, those are a couple of my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kevin. Other APC members online, I don't see any other hands. Okay, Steve, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Steve Bishara. So, um, I, I know that Rob and Jacob and others know this, but, um, you don't really re- reference transit specifically, um, in, in the transportation and circulation section. Uh, but the good news for this project, I believe, is that it is in the heart of the service area of Lakelink, cause the free to the rider microtransit. So I would imagine that in some of this discussion and some of the resulting recommendations, uh, Barton's partnership with Lakelink would be identified. The other, uh, issue is it's also in the heart of our van pool, uh, initiative area. So we have a number of van pools that are serving major employers, uh, particularly bringing employees from the Carson Valley, from Carson City, even from Reno. So I'm hoping that there would be some discussion of how Barton might participate in the van pool program. Um, so, and then with respect to housing, uh, the project is actually in the area where there is the majority of deed restricted affordable housing in Douglas County. And so, um, I know that often those are full, but there should be some analysis of, are there any vacancies in this property or the ones in Oliver Park, uh, that could be utilized by, by the employer? So thank you for allowing me to add those.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Anyone want any go backs? Other thoughts? I'll just chime in a little bit then. Um, certainly appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I, I share many of those. I, I think it would be, you know, wise of Barton to investigate an alternative with no amendments proposed to the, to the area plan, um, as a safety alternative. Certainly understand the need to move the site, you know, um. I think Dr. Purvance, you laid that out pretty clearly about real impacts and trying to reconstruct a hospital while you're operating it. So that really resonated with me. I appreciated the comment from Hitch about California insurance and Medicare. I get, I get questions from, you know, my friends as, as locals here in town, you know, will my Californian insurance still work? Um, I don't even know the answer to that question, but that, that's gonna impact me. I don't know how that fits in with your analysis, Rob, about impacts to the community. I'm not sure, but I thought that was interesting. I'm curious about, and you might not be able to answer this now, but I just want to make sure that in your analysis, you're obviously thinking about this. Is what sort of findings does TRPA need to make about neighborhood compatibility? I'm not sure if there's a threshold there. That seems a little, uh, ambiguous to me. How, how does this fit? You know, what types of findings will you be needing to check the boxes on when it comes to approval time and how will you analyze those? I know height i- is a huge, um, concern for the surrounding neighborhood. I know there's been some studies done and simulations and I think some balloon, balloon, you know, use of balloons as a tool to sort of really get a real look at, at what this will look like. I'm also curious on the height, given the, the downward slope of the parcel, the groundwater impacts. I understand it looked like, at least from some of the simulations, we saw that quite a bit of fill material will have to go into this site. And so I'm just not sure how, with the fill material and eighty foot tall building, if that, if that changes the height calculation in any way or how that will be analyzed, um, from the front of the building, highway fifty, and from the back of the building, which I think would be Laura Drive. If it's an eighty foot tall building, but there's twenty feet of fill, is that a hundred foot tall building? I don't know the answer to that question, um, but I think it's something important that, that needs to be looked at. Um, yeah, helicopter flights, how many per day? That sounded like a real concern from the neighborhood. You know, I, I've lived in town for a long time. I don't, I don't see the helicopter going. I, I live fairly close, you know, to the hospital now. I don't, I don't see the helicopter traveling to the hospital all that much. Maybe I'm missing it, but I just, I don't know, you know, I, we never want that to happen, but it happens. How many a day? How many a day is that? You know, and obviously we need a helicopter to land on this site for patients. So to me, that seems like an obvious need. It's just, where's the best place to put that? How's that gonna be analyzed from a noise perspective, et cetera? Definitely support, you know, this being near Transit Center, the overhead, uh, walkway seems like a great idea. So I think Barton, you know, has taken a lot of input. We appreciate seeing the hundred plus meetings. Um, there's probably a thousand more to go. And, um, my, I guess mantra to everyone is to stay engaged. And I think if we all, you know, care about our community from all our different angles, that we can arrive at a, at a great solution. And so I, I hope that's our shared goal. So, given that I think we're done with comments here, I'd like to go ahead and open this up for public comment. I'm wondering if, actually, one second before that. Would you like to respond to any, um, Robert, Jacob, or even Dr. Purvance I'd extended to you? Anything that was raised that you'd like to either answer or provide a clarification on? I think this might be a good time before we go to the public.
I can do that. Starting with, uh, Ashley, she had a couple of questions about the no project alternative. Um, and that is something we're going to, uh, work to define better is what would happen at the California campus if there is no, uh, hospital built in Nevada? Um, and so that will definitely be studied, the, what physical changes would have to occur and how they would occur at that site, at the California campus. Uh, we will also potentially look at off-site alternatives in the, uh, EIS. Um, if there are some off-site locations, we'll look at those and determine whether they can be analyzed or if they're rejected from further study for a certain reason. And if they are, that'll be included in the document, the reasoning for such. Transit was brought up by Steve, uh, the location of the site near transit, you know, not just negatives will be studied in the IS. In some cases, there are benefits and we'll identify those as well. Uh, sites, location to existing transit, how it would work with the existing transit. Um, Brendan, you asked about neighborhood compatibility findings. I think that got to the question previously about right now, under the area plan, um, special use findings are required. We're gonna identify those in the IS and what they are currently. And then also discuss how those could be made for the project. So even though the proposal is to amend the area plan to eliminate that need, we'll study that in the IS. And one of those is neighborhood compatibility. Height findings and calculations about fill and grade, um, the way TRPA identifies height is from natural grade. And at this site, natural grade's a little different than existing grade. And there's some information available about that, um, pre lakeside end development and the contours at the site before it was developed. And so that will be studied in the IS and it is a little confusing. And so we'll have to make sure we're very careful to point out the differences, uh, between the existing grade there and what natural grade was and how they differ. And a number of helicopters, that's a big question and the concern over the noise. Uh, Barton has provided, uh, two years of data on helicopter use at the current campus and we'll use that to, uh, help with the study of potential helicopter noise at the Nevada site. And those were the ones that I thought somebody had asked that needed a response.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move to, to public comment. Do we, do we have a list? Have folks written, has anyone written names down on a list that may want to get in order? If so, I'll take that now. Let me read a brief statement, um, about public comment. So first we'll take public comment in the room and then we'll go online. So to participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov in the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission, meeting Wednesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty five. There you'll find a link to our webinar. And if any member of the, um, public wishes to address the APC online, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone. And we'll call upon you after we take public comment in the room. So I do have a list. And I also have a request, uh, that we have two on duty doctors, Dr. Paul Ryan and Dr. David Young, who would like to speak at the beginning due to some time commitments. Are either of you gentlemen present in the room and would you like to come forward now?
Good morning, Chairman and, uh, Commission and Public. I'm Paul Ryan. I'm here as a physician at Barton. I'm one of the orthopedic surgeons, uh, and as a parent of one of the students in George Patel. And I wanted to address the benefits of the expansion from both of those perspectives. Um, as was mentioned, Barton continues to expand, grow and evolve, uh, with the community. And that's what brought my family here four years ago as orthopedic services expanded. We continue to do so and over the next two years, we're adding three more orthopedic surgeons to our practice. With more surgeons, you need more space, more clinic space, more OR space. And so the expansion of hospital services is necessary. From the orthopedic standpoint, we plan to maintain our offices in California, maintain our ORs in California and have additional offices, additional ORs in Nevada. What that means for the public is you'll have increased access to care. Um, so less wait time for clinic appointments, less to wait time for surgeries. Uh, and I think that's gonna be great for the community and I'm proud to be a part of that. Uh, and then the second point I wanted to make was, uh, as a parent. So we chose, uh, George Patel High School for our daughter, uh, for the small class sizes, um, and student parent ratio. I'm now the cross country coach there and I had a hard time filling my team. So there's small and there's too small. So my hope is that as this hospital comes into Nevada, it's going to bring families and good jobs. And I think that's going to have a positive impact on the community from a growth standpoint and hopefully positive enrollment at the high school. And then my cross country team can truly dominate. So those are my two points. I'm really happy to be here. I'm excited for the hospital expansion as a physician and a member of the community. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Come on up.
There we go. Good morning, everyone. My name is David Young. I'm the cardiologist at Barton. I've been there for the last thirteen years and over the last two years I've been the chief medical officer as part of the administration. I would like to thank all of you for letting me be part of this meeting. One of the things that's been truly a learning process for me over the last couple of years is how complex it is to deliver medical care that goes way out of sight of what we do in the clinic. I started as a cardiologist thirteen years ago. It was just me. We did not have a cardiology service line at Barton. Dr. Purvance and I put that program in place. And we're now at a point that I work as a cardiologist. I have two mid levels and we're bringing in a second cardiologist to meet the needs of the community. Our community is aging. The population of fifty five and older is growing. And with that, the demands on cardiovascular services continue to grow. The California campus as it sits is just insufficient to supply the needs of our community. We need to expand for me to bring in new technology to detect heart attacks upstream, to provide care for pacemakers, cardiac catheterizations, things that our community members are having to be transferred off the hill. The hospital replacement project is vital. I'd also like to echo what Paul said is, you know, we're committed to maintaining two campuses. I get that questions a lot to me in the clinic and they said, well, doctor, do I have to go all the way over to state line to get my care now? And the answer is just no. We are committed to a dual campus model. I will have cardiology clinics in California. I will have cardiology clinics in Nevada to meet the needs of our by state community. So from a practitioner, from a cardiologist standpoint, I just wanted to convey the importance of this. Not only in the commitment to the dual campus model, but the advantages of this new hospital, this state of the art facility and the cardiac care that we'll be able to deliver to this community. The second part of it I wanted to speak as an administrator. So as part of my role as chief medical officer, I oversee all the physicians in Barton. And one of the primary things we talk about is access. How do we provide more access to medical care in our community? And time and time again, there is two limiting factors that come up. One is support staff services. So the affordable housing and everything you talk about is important. And the other is space. It's a constant game of Tetris with our California campus of where to fit these providers in to provide more access to care. And having a new facility, the state of the art facility only allows us to provide more access to care from primary care to the most advanced specialty care services like oncology, like cardiology, like neurology, everything that we want to build and develop for the community. So I thank you for this. It's truly educational to me. I'm glad I can be a part of it because a lot of doctors ask me and say, well, what is this environmental service? And we have meetings with all of our hospital staff and explain this, but I truly appreciate the time and hearing from the public and hearing from all of you and and know as physicians in the community, we stand behind this and and look forward to this process.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I'm sure being a cardiovascular surgeon is complicated, but not as complicated as what what we do is planners and kidding, totally kidding. Okay, great. Let me go down my list now and you know where you stand, Ellie. So come on up.
Ellie Waller. Please be reminded this is a town center overlay proposed project area, not a regional center or high density tourist district overlay. A hospital was not analyzed for impacts in the regional plan update for towns in our consideration. This is the wrong place for a hospital proposing greater heights by right and dismissing the need for a special use permit. Supporting a new hospital, but within the confines of the proposed alternative, no plan or code amendments should be one recommendation you strongly consider. A project that is consistent with the existing South Shore area plan. Or a modified alternative for consideration, which has been preached as dual campus approach while combining the ideas of alternative design, building and or parking layout, addressing those significantly potential impacts of noise, traffic, circulation, scenic, etc. An expansion could also be proposed at the California site after this hospital is done. So that can be taken in consideration. A few other items, the proposed project includes a publicly accessible pedestrian overpass across fifty connecting to the Nevada campus on the east side. The notice of preparation staff report does not mention the east side assessor parcel numbers. Only the new Barton ones. What parcels are going to be utilized on the east side for the overpass needs to be disclosed and those potential impacts also analyzed. The primary entrance for parking is stated at US fifty. I attended a Kingsbury Grade Improvement District meeting recently, and the Barton presenter said four H road was off the table. We need consistent messaging. Is four H Camp Road being used? Lots of intersection traffic analysis there. Laurel Drive, Laura Drive should try not to be used. It's seven hundred. How many employees driving into those parking facilities? Thank you for the evacuation. I have that in my notes. Evacuation plan specific to the hospital is necessary. Nothing in the staff report have addressed how the patients, employees, visitors, so on, will be evacuated. The Beach Club partnered with an already built housing development to meet their affordable housing obligation for deed restricting units. It's time to build new, which is the intention, in my opinion, of why TRPA has crafted phases one and two. Explanation of how many units should be necessary for those needs to be discussed and donating donating land doesn't cut it. Lastly, a corridor management plan study for State Route two oh seven with N dot probably should be considered and looked at with this new Barton facility as well as the event center and all those cumulative impacts that have not come forward with anything that's been built in the last ten years with Douglas County or State Line and the other communities. That's enough food for thought today. And then just in closing, can we have the two presentations that are not in the packet posted on the website? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Appreciate that. Next I have Jerry Bendel.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Jerry Bendel. I'm representing the South Lake Tahoe Lodging Association. To the cardiologist's point, I am also over fifty five and aging as well. I'm representing the South Lake Tahoe Lodging Community today. We are, we encompass over seventy properties, twenty three hundred staff members. We were given the great presentation that Dr. Purvance provided today about month ago and our board unanimously approved supporting this project. We approved it for four different reasons. The first one, the majority of our line level staff is and lives in the state line Biju area, much closer to the new facility. And to Mr. Tashara's point, access via Lake Link and public transportation system, a lot of our staff do not have vehicles. They walk to work. They will be able to access the hospitals in a much easier fashion. The second is our guests. The majority of our guests are, of course, in the downtown core area. That is where the casinos are. That is where the majority of the lodging properties are and we are designing our community to that level. They will also be able to access the new hospital via public transport, won't have to drive down to the end of town. So there'll be vehicle mile travels, traveled benefits for them. The third item is that the new State of Heart, the Art Hospital, we're in a rural community. To have a hospital of this nature is unbelievable. I lived in Breckenridge before here and we had to go down to the Front Range. We had to go down to Denver for major surgeries. We had outpost hospitals. This is an incredible opportunity for our community, for our visitors as well, but also for our aging local population. And then lastly, while we miss our lodging brethren at the Lakeside Inn and Casino, we understand that the benefits of having a brand new hospital aesthetically, environmentally. And lastly, the health benefits is really a benefit to our community and to our staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wendell. Next I have Ms. Kriegen. Come on up, Kristy.
Hi. I'm Kristy Kriegen. I'm the CEO and today representing the Tahoe Chamber. And I want to thank you for this really thoughtful conversation. I've seen Dr. Purvance's presentation as well, and I learned some new things today. The Chamber supports this project. It, as Mr. Young on your committee noted, it really meets a lot of economic goals about economic development as well as sustainability. And I know that those will be included in the scoping document. And I just wanted to echo a couple of other comments that were made. The theme of transportation is very important today. And I know that I made a doctor's appointment for my daughter the other day and that I was able to cancel. And when I went on the MyChart to cancel it, there were two options given. And one of them was I don't have transportation to my appointment, so I have to cancel it. And so that really hit home to me. I know that that is a huge barrier to care. So if this project has the opportunity to solve that, it's really important that we do so. The second one is, Mr. Ferry, as you noted, the no project. The no project alternative is not sustainable. I know that when the city was looking at the new rec center, the no, the no project alternative, keeping it in the same location was considered. And that wasn't good enough for a rec center and pool, much less a hospital. So if we can maintain all of the services that are currently at the hospital while building the new hospital facility at the new location, that would be much better use of resources and take care of the patients much better. Lastly, I really support, the Chamber really supports the process that you're going through. This is a robust process. There's a million meetings that a lot of people are participating in that will continue to do so. And we really believe in the outcome that you'll come to. So thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Next I have Sandy Parks. I believe you spoke earlier. I'm not sure. Is Sandy still here? Looks like she's not. Okay. Next I have, I believe it's Doree. Dorn Brow from KGID. Debbie, Doree. Debbie, maybe, is it? It looks like a D E R. Okay. Okay. Let me move on. Next I have Eric Breen. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I am a member of the community and I'm also an employee at Barton. And today I kind of come here representing the patients within our community, trying to be an advocate for them. I've been in Barton for ten years with twenty two years of nursing experience. And when I joined a hospital system, I first evaluated its commitment to the community it serves. Excuse me. I can confidently say that Barton Health's leadership and staff prioritize the well being of the Lake Tahoe community above all else. As an ER nurse at Barton for five years and now the last five years I've been a home health and hospice nurse, I've witnessed firsthand the critical gaps in healthcare resources available to our community. Patients frequently face barriers to care off often requiring travel outside the Tahoe Basin for essential services. These challenges are not merely inconveniences. They impact health outcomes and the quality of life. The proposed new Barton Health Campus presents the transformative opportunity to address these gaps by expanding service lines. Barton can offer comprehensive care locally, allowing residents to remain in Lake Tahoe for treatment. This will reduce the physical and emotional burden of long distance travel for medical care, ensuring our community is better served. I understand the community's concerns regarding potential increases in traffic, drive times and noise for emergency services, including helicopter transfers. These are valid considerations. However, I firmly believe the benefits of the expanded healthcare services far outweigh these challenges. A new campus will enhance access to care, improve patient outcomes and reinforce Barton's community commitment to our community's health. Additionally, I trust that Barton will work diligently to mitigate environmental and logistical impacts as they have consistently demonstrated responsible stewardship. As a nurse who has served in both the acute care and home care settings, I wholeheartedly support this project. The new Barton Health Campus will strengthen our community, improve patient care and support a healthier environment for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next I have John Grigsby.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, echo the request to have those presentations available online. They're extremely helpful and particularly as we work on the next, is work on some proposals here. I a lot of the concerns that you brought up in the members, members of this commission brought up in the last in the in the discussion here, we share particularly rare neighborhood impact, obviously. And I am going to, I have already proposed and will continue to propose alternatives that address some of them. The summary of them is basically emergency services in the middle of a residential neighborhood are a problem. And ambulance is going, you know, either entering residential streets and particular driving by the Lamwata Trail, you know, trailhead and parking lot, which is full of unsteady tourists on rental bikes is a safety problem as well as a traffic problem. Helicopters landing, you know, you know, a few, only a couple hundred feet from houses is a problem. So alternatives to address that while still building a hospital, including include either leaving emergency services in California while leaving clinics and all the other services Barton provides in Nevada. And potentially moving emergency services to the mountain side of the Barton campus while leaving, you know, clinics and other things on the on the on the lakeside. Because at the end of the day, there was a casino here. Nobody's asking for this to be turned into a dog park. We're, we're, we're just trying to deserve the quality of life for the neighborhood and the people who and the people who live there while maintaining, while, you know, maintaining and hopefully improving the quality of medical services. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next I have David Voight, I believe it is. Okay. I'll see you, David. Next is Carol Chaplin. Is Carol here? Yep, there she is. Hi, Carol.
Good morning. Good morning, Carol Chaplin. I'm here as a Douglas County resident. Not in my professional capacity today. I want to, I want to thank you for having this meeting and Dr. Purvance, that was a great presentation. I've seen it a few times, but it gets better every time. And I I know how hard you're listening to the local community, so I appreciate the whole process. Luckily, I was not part of an EIS process with the event center, so I appreciate that as well. But on on that note, VMT, Mr. Bruick, feel free to call me. I am a frequent flyer at Barton Hospital. I had two children that were born there. The first one had at least eleven out of fifteen surgeries there and complimentary physical therapy after that. And the second one was was that stitches staples and scorpion stings kind of kid. So I've been there a lot and I live on this side of the line. So when we're talking about VMT analysis, I hope that that process is going both directions, and I'm sure it is with Mr. Bruick. I also want to thank our local physicians for reminding me that I am in that age group that needs more care. Appreciate that every time that I come to one of these meetings. Hopefully I won't be in their offices anytime soon. And to Dr. Ryan Gold Warriors, my children did graduate from Patel High School, and I think that we do have a real opportunity with this project to affect not only economic impact, but are the quality of life of our residents. Finally, Mr. Young on the on Zoom this morning reminded me of something that has to do with the economic impact of this area and how we might redevelop and how we might also benefit from those projects. And I don't know how many of you, I'm sure a couple of APC members remember Love Chapel on the corner here of Kingsbury on Highway fifty. And my office was located across the street from Lakeside Inn as an anchor tenant in one of those new buildings that's a as an anchor tenant in one of those new buildings that's a beautiful addition to our, our state line area. So there is an economic opportunity, and I hope we can envision that during this project EIS process. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol. Next, I have Brent. Knight, Knight or? Brent here? Okay. Going to move on. I think I only have one more name on my list. So if you, if you're not on the list and you'd like to speak in the room, I'll be calling that next. But I have Patrick Ramey. Good morning.
Hi, Patrick Ramey. I am CEO of Tahoe Beach Club and Beach Club Development. I'm representing those two entities today. I know many of our residents and members are very excited about the new facility that would be coming at the end of Kale Drive. We're very close. We're just down the end of Kale Drive. But I wanted to focus on two things today. One is we forget what was there before. And what by right could be built in that, at that location? And that's not really very compatible with a single-family neighborhood, but I'd much rather have a hospital there than a casino. And if I was developing this site, I would have never torn down that building. But these gentlemen are different. They did the right thing. They tore it down. It was an eyesore. It was a safety risk. It was a liability risk. So I applaud Barton for tearing it down, but it's not a very good move when you're trying to get a project approved. Second thing is, the doctors know what's best for our health. And no offense to this group, but I don't think many hospital experts are on this board or the governing board. So we really need to defer to these guys about what they need to serve our community and protect our health. When I'm in a hospital, it's usually pretty critical. And if I'm there for a life and death situation, I want this building designed to accommodate that. Not something different than that. Seconds might make the difference in our lives or your loved ones' lives. So please listen to the doctors about what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Members of the public in the room who are not on the list and would like to speak specifically on the Barton item now is your opportunity.
Thank you, Laura Koski again. I'm going to brainstorm here. And since he did give a nice little, a gentleman that just spoke, gave a nice little speech. But this is really how I feel about it. It's this pristine area. It's so beautiful. And this is horrible to put a cement block there. And I'm all for safety. I've been out there seven days a week for the last 20 years trying to help out. And I'm not kidding. And, you know, let's just put hospitals in the Grand Canyon at this point. I'd really like to make Tahoe a national monument where you can drill for oil if you can find it, but you cannot build. But I'm just going to go through a few things. Our hospital right now is not certified for trauma. You have to be flown out to Davis or to Reno. So if you do upgrade this hospital, this second one, and the doctor had made it clear that we're going to have both hospitals. We're not going to gut one and then build another one. Not that I'm for this at all. But obviously, I want to save lives and prevent lives. And, you know, it is what it is. Okay, many nurses are against this. The Barton right now has an excellent patient ratio. And they've expressed that. And then I'm concerned on, obviously, state taxes will be eliminated because they'll go to Nevada and then lower wages. And the nurses were already protesting. They wanted to increase some wages and heavily already eliminated employees that were there for long time, long term, excuse me. And, you know, therefore they don't respond. I feel like we need to have the SCIBR sorts forced to have little hospitals, which they did, and, and have them helping out for the concerns there. You, sir, you were talking about the secret laws aren't for Nevada. We have sovereign laws, God-given rights. So, you know, the 5G towers do affect us. And we do have the EVs blowing up on the lake for the helicopter response. I just want to brainstorm here. I really think that we need to have toll roads or educational checkpoints before people are coming in to this little fishbowl area and to eliminate all these accidents that have been horrific over the years. The, the toilets at the casinos aren't flushing. I think it's just over those high-volume days. So the water table really needs to be considered. That's for the most part, all I have to say. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the public in the room, please come forward. Now's your chance to speak on the Barton item. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Catherine, let's go online, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two hands raised online. First hand up was Doug Flaherty. Doug, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, Chair and Committee Members. No public agency, including the TRPA, and no project, including the Barton Project, should make it harder for Nevadans or anyone else to safely escape deadly wildfires. Evidence will show that the project as proposed will diminish the already existing public peril wildfire evacuation times within the already dangerous choke point evacuation constrained Kale Drive Town Center. And as common sense, data-driven substantial evidence will demonstrate may lead to catastrophic area resident and visitor loss of life during a fast-moving, no-notice wind and slope, ember storm-driven wildfire, including across state evacuation timing impacts. This then potentially jeopardizing resident and visitor lives and violating Nevada's right to pursue and obtain their safety under the Nevada State Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, which states, "All men are by nature free and equal to have certain inalienable rights, among of those which are the enjoyment and defense of life and liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining quote-unquote 'safety and happiness.'" Additionally, adoption of the project as proposed will run counter to the TRPA Regional Goal LU 3.2, which states, "No person or person shall develop property so as to endanger the public health underscore safety and welfare." To support my comments, TahoeCleanAir.org once again places the October 2024 Independent Lake Tahoe Basin Wildfire Evacuation Analysis on the TRPA record, as has been previously placed on the TRPA record and can be found at our website at TahoeCleanAir.org. This as new substantial evidence consistent with what is considered substantial evidence is discussed within Nevada State Supreme Court Case 25727 in the By-State Compact. TRPA's own leadership acknowledges the urgency that the initially released independent evacuation analysis highlights. On September 26, 2024, the TRPA Executive Director Julie Regan emailed me stating, quote-unquote, "Your study is raising more awareness of the urgent need for regional evacuation planning." In short, and in closing, the Barton EIS must cumulatively analyze the direct and indirect effects of wildfire, including wildfire evacuation timing from all past, current, and reasonably foreseeable Tahoe-Douglas and Tahoe-Alderato projects and code amendments since the approved 2012 TRPA Regional Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
And the last hand raise is Lisa O'Daly. Lisa, please unmute to make your comment.
Hi, I'm Lisa O'Daly. TRPA's Regional Plan is the common thread that ensures a basin-wide look at zoning of the regional public service development. The 2014 Tahoe Valley Area Plan, or TVAP, was front-loaded with incentives to support Barton's hub of healthcare services centered around a thriving hospital. To take advantage of these incentives, in 2015, Barton created a master plan that included a new hospital and was approved by the city. It is now inconsistent with the current Barton proposal to relocate the hospital to Nevada. In the proposed South Shore Area Plan Amendment, Policy 8.3 copied almost word for word the incentive found in the TVAP's Policy ED-2.3. Let me explain why I consider that misguided. First, your planners, you know that while hospitals are a public service use, medical offices are normally commercial. Public service uses are defined in the TRPA Code. The TVAP created an incentive broadening the definition of public service uses in a creative manner. And the SSAP proposes to do it again. The TVAP empowered Barton's status as a nonprofit entity to enable all of its owned properties housing healthcare services to be considered public service uses exempt from the need for CFA. For example, the new 26,000 square foot orthopedic center was built as a public service facility when it would have required CFA without the TVAP policy. But this TVAP incentive also facilitated use of TRPA Code Section 50.8.4, which allows CFA to be banked and transferred when an approved public service use displaces CFA. This incentive qualified Barton Healthcare to obtain verification and banking permits for 66,906 square feet of CFA originating from old buildings that they owned within the healthcare district. Much of this CFA has been sold and transferred. And here's the kicker. In that section of code, there is a cap on the number of such transfers to 60,000 square feet regionally after 1998. Apparently, the regional cap hasn't been considered as our local hospital has become the biggest CFA land bank in the Lake Tahoe region. There simply isn't room within the regional plan's cap for this incentive to be repeated within the South Shore Area Plan. Today, I learned from Dr. Purvance that the new hospital is also sized to support the, quote, "surrounding region" outside of the Lake Tahoe Basin. I remind the APC that the regional plan's goals and policies, specifically Policy Land Use-2.1, limits additional public service development to those projects needed to serve other development permitted by the regional plan, thus within the Tahoe Basin. Please construct our new state-of-the-art hospital in California within the more than 20 acres Barton owns within the existing healthcare district of the TVAP that I believe would allow for a phased hospital development while the existing hospital functions during construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised. Say comment.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Steph or Rob, would you like to respond to any of the comments before we come back to the APC members?
Well, I think it'd be difficult. I documented all of them.
Okay.
But I think it'd be difficult to go through right now and do that. We intend to do that in our scoping summary report, which will be released at the end of this month.
Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted a chance to do that. So why don't we come back for a final, any final thoughts from APC? Not seeing any here. APC members online. Anyone like to make an additional comment? Okay, seeing none. How, how, well, I don't, I don't know if we need to get into the weeds on the CFA question, but is, is part of the new healthcare district in the South Shore Area Man, Area Plan Amendment package, will that CFA be handled in the same way as it was in the TVAP? Is that the proposal or do we know that yet?
This is Jacob Stock. I would need to go back and and take a look at that. And so I can do that and, and get back to you on that question. So I'll get back to you.
Okay. I think get back to everyone. Yeah. Just like to see maybe some of that summary. I think one other tenant that we continue to hear, and Dr. Purvance touched on this, it, and so did Dr. Ryan, is, is the shared dual campus system. I mean, that's, that's what everyone seems to want is continued service in California. And I think Dr. Purvance talked about a $20 million investment in the California campus. So I think that that's critically important to the success of this proposal. And I think we continue to hear that theme. So it sounds like Barton's committed to that, which is fantastic. Okay, so we did this just about before noon, which is, I'm amazed. I think we are good. Any final thoughts, Mr. Hester, anyone else, before I close this item? Okay. Wait, just one point of clarification. This, there's no action that's needed. We're not making a motion. This is simply the beginning of the NOP, just to clarify that.
That's correct. Yeah, you, you laid it out at the beginning, Brandon. We, just for clarification, I mean, we put these sometimes on the agenda as an action item. The purpose of that is to make sure that there's room on our agenda for APC to direct staff to, to sort of consider some things. We don't want to get in a situation where we've, we're getting complaints that, hey, this wasn't agendized for action. But that doesn't mean that we're at this time recommending out of APC any particular action to the governing board. So you clarified that at the beginning.
Thank you, Graham. Okay. With that, I'm going to close Item 5A. And thank you all for your time this morning. We are also going to take about a five-minute break right now before we, five, 10 minutes. It sounds like some lunch might be coming in.
Lunch is not expected till 12:30, but we would suggest you take a bio break.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
And then we could have lunch, working lunch.
Yes, that sounds great. We'll transition the room and get ready for Item 5B. Thanks. All right, let's try to come back together, everyone, if we can. All right. So.
Mr. Chairman, we've strategically timed this so that you have to listen to the RTP presentation before you get to eat, so that you're not digesting your food.
Sounds, sounds ideal.
Pizza should be here about 12:30.
Pizza's coming at 12:30. Okay, thank you so much for that. Yeah. I think that'll work just fine. And let me find my notes and bring us back to order here. And I'm going to move us on to Agenda Item 5B. This is the APC review and comment on the Connections 2050 Draft Regional Transportation Plan. And information on this item can be found on page 57 of your packets. And I'm going to be turning this over to Ryan and Michelle, it looks like, to present on this item. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Ryan Murray. I'm a transportation planner here at TRPA. I, I just want to say, John, I thought the strategic plan was to have pizza before this presentation, so we'll have to clear that up next time, but.
No, we don't want them digesting while you're.
Okay, yeah, we're alert. We're, we're hungry and alert. So again, Ryan Murray, TRPA. I'm going to be presenting to you all today on our Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy Connections 2050. The plan is currently live on our website in draft format. So right now, we are right in the middle of a public comment period on that draft plan. So I am here today to kind of present this high-level overview of the regional transportation plan. I'm going to be calling it RTP a lot. And then to get feedback or comments from you all on that plan, so then we can incorporate them into that plan and then come back with a final draft for possible recommendation to our governing board in July. So more to come on that. Next slide, please. So before I dive into this, I just want to mention, up in the top right-hand corner of all these slides, we sort of have these little cheat sheet references to where the information on the slide can be found in the plan. Kind of again, these are really high-level slides. This is a very detailed and comprehensive plan. So if you're more curious to dive in deeper than what these slides present, take a look at, in this particular slide, it's Chapter 1, the introduction, or Appendix J for the RTP checklist. So diving in, what is a regional transportation plan? For us, it is a 20-plus-year planning horizon. That's an outlook on the transportation vision. Uh, for us, it is a twenty plus year planning horizon. That's an outlook on the transportation vision and goals and projects for the next twenty-five years in the Tahoe Basin. It includes strategies for implementation of those programs and projects, as well as a funding plan within the RTP. TRPA, uh, we satisfy three transportation planning authorities, one being the federal designation of the Metropolitan Planning Organization to help distribute those federal funds to fund some of these uh, programs and projects. Um, but as well as the TRPA with the by-state compact and our environmental thresholds that we are beholden to, we have that as a through line throughout the entire uh, plan. Um, and then on the California side, uh, here at TRPA, we are also the Regional Transportation Planning Authority, which is kind of a subset of that federal designation, except for the state of California, to help disseminate those California funds for those projects. Next slide, please. So the public input that went into the plan, on the left side of the slide there, I show uh, uh, from the last plan adoption in twenty twenty till current twenty twenty-four, we uh, surveyed over six thousand seven hundred and three participants. Um, over ten thousand were reached through various proactive outreach attempts, and this goes into all of our uh, transportation planning processes here at TRPA. This would have been for the active transportation plan that was adopted last year, the visions zero strategy, um, things like the public participation plan, uh, the transit needs assessment. We're always engaging the community on all these transportation initiatives. So all of those fed into the creation of this document. Um, as well as on the right side of the slide there, the RTP focused outreach, uh, which took place over three months last year, um, where we reached uh, over four hundred people through a bilingual survey, and this was all RTP focused. Um, hosted an uh, basin-wide online webinar, um, presented at thirty-four individual uh, regional stakeholders, associations, committees, commissions, boards, community orgs, various uh, um, venues like that. Um, and then we incorporated all that feedback into the planning framework and narrative of the plan. Next slide, please. So beyond the uh, public input, we also had a lot of technical input. So uh, I had mentioned that active transportation plan and vision zero safety strategy. Um, those had technical advisory committees that were convened, uh, regional partners came together to inform us on the creation of those two plans. Um, both of those feed into the larger regional transportation plan. Um, we also consulted the implementing local agencies, uh, which guided the project list. Um, more on that later. Um, last year, uh, Michelle had convened a transportation performance technical advisory committee to help us uh, devise metrics in which to analyze the performance of the transportation network in Tahoe, um, as well as consulted the transit operators that provided a review and input on the transit appendices um, that are found in the plan. You can see it, it's all the part of this adaptive management process that we're always honing in on, um, which is to identify those performance metrics, set the goals, measure that performance, evaluate it, and then upgrade the management response um, in an iterative and always improving process. Next slide for me. So beyond public input, technical input, uh, a large driver of the plan is data. Um, you can see this is just too small um, subsets. We have the appendix, appendices listed in the top right corner where if you could really dive in uh, deeper, but we show here over the twenty-five year outlook, uh, the population, particularly in the mega, mega region of Lake Tahoe, um, going as far out as the Bay Area, Sacramento, Carson City and Reno, seeing upwards of around twenty-five percent population increases over the next twenty-five years, a seven percent increase in Tahoe. So the questions and some of the solutions that the plan, uh, the RTP lays out are how to manage that growth in a, in a responsible way that potentially doesn't encourage more people to uh, drive or use a personal automobile and potentially take transit, walk or bike. And you can see that also reflected there in the bottom right uh, with those peaks and valleys of visitation. We have kind of like daily spikes, but then uh, uh, major spikes around the holiday times with um, July fourth and Labor Day, and of course, Christmas and New Year's. Um, so then again, looking at how that transportation network serves the residents and locals year round and what that looks like, but then also how to uh, manage that demand as we get those peaks in tourism travel. Next slide for me, please. So the RTP uh, lays out both goals and strategies to manage everything I just uh, described. Um, the goals are um, uh, pretty straightforward, in my opinion. We have safety, uh, which is the safety of the network. We want to reduce, and this is also ties back to the vision zero safety strategy, which is to reduce um, severe and fatal collisions around Tahoe, making a safe environment for people to walk and bike so that it encourages those modes more. Um, of course, as I mentioned earlier with the thresholds, we have the, our commitment to the environment and and maintaining a, a, a sound and healthy environment uh, for both residents and visitors of Tahoe. Um, prosperity and resilience, I always couple together in my mind. Um, prosperity, I think of public health. I think of economic prosperity and same with resilience. Um, we want uh, economic resilience. It was discussed a lot with Barton, so moving people around, moving goods around, how to maintain that. Um, resilience can also uh, tie to uh, like the infrastructure needs, like uh, was mentioned as a public comment earlier, potholes. Um, uh, the uh, uh, quality or serviceable needs of the transit buses, things like that. So you want your um, assets to be resilient. Of course, mobility, providing options for folks to get around Tahoe, uh, whether that be transit. We have a lot of uh, shared mobility coming into the Tahoe Basin. And then performance of the transportation network. How is it operating? Uh, are we moving people efficiently through our existing network? Um, moving on to the right side of the slide there, we have uh, the strategies, and I kind of refer to these as the main chapters of the RTP. Um, we go through the transit trails, technology, towns and corridors. And these are our sort of pointed strategies that we try to address the uh, and support the goals that are on the left side of the slide there. So I'll get into more detail with that. Um, next slide for me, please. So trails, uh, when we're talking about trails, uh, we're speaking about uh, uh, things like those shared use bicycle paths, uh, bike lanes or bicycle routes, um, and sidewalks, pedestrian infrastructure, a little less so about um, the single use, I'm sorry, single uh, single track dirt trails uh, that are mostly recreational. Um, so the, some project types, and I'm kind of like summarizing uh, what is about a hundred and thirty, just over a hundred and thirty projects listed on the project list. Uh, we want, want those trail projects to be connected and safe. We kind of want the heart of those projects to embody the goals of vision zero, which again are zero severe and fatal deaths um, on our roadway network. Uh, of course, we have the Tahoe Trail, a class one path around the lake, which has always been a goal. Um, but we also want to see more on-street, low-stress in, infrastructure. Like uh, this is sort of technical terminology, but the class four and class two B improvements, class four would be a phys, uh, vertically protected bike lane. And then class two B is what's considered a buffered bike, bike lane, which is uh, striping to create horizontal separation between a cyclist and uh, the travel lane. Um, so we would love to, we have neither of those facilities in Tahoe, so we would, uh, this plan supports uh, implementing some of those projects. And then, of course, ample bicycle parking. You know, I think about this a lot when we talk about vehicle parking and where are people going to park and how's that going to happen? And as a cyclist in Tahoe, I think about the same thing uh, for my bicycle. Um, where am I going to park uh, if I choose to ride my bicycle to a destination? So a lot of times that is the first hurdle for folks on uh, choosing to uh, bike instead of drive. Um, so the plan through the trails section supports uh, those project types. Next slide for me, please. So then moving on to technology. Um, some of the project types with that are uh, real-time travel and parking information. So that would be like at, you see Ezra the Eagle there, one of our RTP characters, uh, sitting at a uh, fictional transit shelter that shows that real-time transit information. Um, understanding when the bus will arrive, when it has just departed is super helpful for folks using the transit system. Um, coordinated traffic signals, uh, this has a number of benefits. Um, compelling uh, uh, the posted speed limits. If you speed, you might hit a red light where if the coordinated traffics, uh, the traffic signals are coordinated. Um, if you go the speed limit, you could potentially hit greens the whole way. So that's a helpful feature. Um, conveniently located electrical vehicle charging stations has always been a big initiative, uh, also for the um, environment, environmental goals. And then optimized data collection. Another thing I want to touch upon with technology is uh, some of these also have wildfire evacuation resiliency improvements. Um, things like the real-time travel information, you can get information out across state boundaries. Um, and as, as well as the coordinated traffic signals, if you have an evacuation event heading in one direction. Um, it is assumed that those coordinated signals can be done to provide greens in all one direction or something like that. Um, so all these things are kind of that, that evacuation through line is, is woven into a lot of these resiliency improvements, but um, mostly the technology section. Next slide for me, please. So the towns and corridor section, um, project types for this are the safe, walkable, bikable connections uh, within town centers. Uh, complete streets improvements, these brings o- other benefits such as stormwater upgrades. Um, again, kind of touching again on that walkable bike, bikeable component. Um, big initiative here at TRPA is that affordable housing and mixed-use development. An example of, so those are, in my opinion, those are more town center uh, projects, and then we have the corridor side of things, which are the longer stretches of roadway that then connect our town centers. So an, an example of a project type of a corridor would be that SR twenty-eight corridor improvements and the Spooner Summit Mobility Hub. Um, so the idea here is then you get these mobility hubs along these long corridors, potentially people park their vehicles as they enter the basin and then hop on the transit network or maybe connect to an electric bike share or, or head to the trailhead directly from the uh, mobility hub um, without having to drive around the lake or things like that. Um, so all of those together sort of comprise that towns and corridor section, how to sort of uh, merge the two needs of long stretches of roadway that are often automobile dependent with those uh, what we're seeking to create our safe, walkable, bikable town centers. Uh, next slide for me, please. And then we have transit. Um, for the transit project types, we're looking at expanded fixed route services and micro transit coverage. Uh, increased frequency and reliability of our existing network. Uh, fleet electrification, which is already underway. Um, expanded interregional connections. So again, that's that north to south, south shore connection, um, which, which is a, can be a tough one at times currently. Um, and then an updated coordinated human services transportation plan. So again, all these T sections are uh, interlaced and, and, and co-connected, I would say. Um, they're not uh, siloed, as we all know with the transportation network, everything sort of connects with everything else. Um, so we're always looking at that holistic approach on, on merging all these project types and goals in and within each other. Uh, next slide for me, please. So uh, I kind of mentioned a bunch of project types. Within those project types are the specific projects that you can find. I believe it is in, in appendix B. Uh, but um, with those projects comes a dollar amount. How do we get these projects on the ground? So we have two uh, project type categories, m- main project type categories. Um, and they are foreseeable and illustrative. Foreseeable are projects that we have already identified funding for. So all the projects on that foreseeable list, uh, that total estimated come, came out to uh, two point four or five billion dollars to implement those foreseeable projects. And again, that's over the next twenty-five years. Um, we have a number of projects now on what are we, what we're calling illustrative. The illustrative category are projects that we would like to see in Tahoe, but we currently do not have identified funding for. So I really like that graphic in the bottom right there. You see uh, foresee them, and this is depicting our transit network. Uh, the foreseeable graphic uh, of Lake Tahoe is the today. And you can see we have service on the North Shore and then the service there on the South Shore with those lines. Um, of the illustre, so the foreseeable funding we have for transit only continues existing service that we have today. Or the illustrative for the vision that we would like to see for Tahoe are those increased dollar sign amounts that then get us that north-south shore connections, connections to Myers, more connections to Reno, Carson, uh, Minden, things like that. So um, to me, that highlights really well those foreseeable dollars that we, that we know we can rely on versus those illustrative dollars that we still need to identify to complete the build out of that vision. Um, some good news is that we are seeing lo- of the local implementers contribute uh, more and more a year over year, which they're currently contribute a larger share than ever. So that, that is something to celebrate. Um, but still, it's kind of, as I was mentioning, is transit's one of our largest needs um, in terms of identifying more funding. Next slide for me, please. So another thing, um, we're going to be bringing forth with the, the proposed adoption of the RTP are proposed code amendments to the TRPA code. We're going to bring these forth as a separate I, action items, separate from the adoption of the RTP, but I just wanted to touch upon these stuff so, so you could potentially comment on them. Um, the first would be uh, currently class one trails are exempt from the calculation of coverage in the, in the Tahoe Basin, if it's identified in the active transportation plan or the regional transportation plan. And we are proposing to add sidewalks um, to that class one designation as being exempt from coverage. The idea here is we want to incentivize the right facility for the right uh, application. Uh, if a, if a sidewalk is more appropriate and an adjacent bike lane in the street is the appropriate facility, we don't, we want to incentivize that sidewalk by not having that be calculated as coverage in the same manner that class one, which are shared use paths are exempt from coverage. So that's, that's the broad strokes on sidewalks. Um, and then we're going to be bringing forth an update to our employee trip reduction ordinance. Um, these were uh, uh, updates that were, came out of a recommendations from the commute Tahoe working group. And so um, it's, the broad strokes on that one is it's going to take a more holistic approach to that trip reduction as well as a potential, um, we're looking at identifying a potential staff member to help um, employers be compliant on providing these trip reduction benefits to their employees. So to help spur those, I think it's fifty plus or more employee, employers um, to actually provide these benefits to their employees. So to help move that program along. And then, of course, uh, both the regional transportation plan and those code amendments underwent a environmental analysis. Um, we analyzed the environmental and threshold to make sure those were compliant. Uh, uh, of course, m- making sure everything was SEQA compliant. Um, the environmental analyzed proposed changes to the projects, policies and implementing codes since the last RTP adoption. Um, it also incorporated new information and data sources that were not as available during the last RTP and disclosed potential environmental impacts and includes mitigation um, to reduce to less than significant levels. And all of this, I have a, a link on my last slide. All, all these environmental documents are also posted with the draft plan and its appendices. Next slide for me, please. Okay, so the timeline. Um, currently, I'm here at APC, uh, the Advisory Planning Commission. Um, we've already presented to the governing board and uh, the Tahoe Transportation Commission. Um, we're in the middle of that public comment period, as I stated at the outset. We, we've extended the public comment period to June second um, to offer folks more time to read the plan. Like I said, it can be lengthy if you don't just read the executive summary. Um, so more time, more time to dive in and uh, let us know what you think. Um, and then moving on through to June, we're going to be incorporating those comments into the final draft of the plan. Um, getting that all prepared for July, which will be uh, coming back to the TTC and APC for recommendations on that final plan to our governing board for hopeful plan adoption. And I, and I do want to note, we have been um, receiving public comments so far, and we've been responding to them. And part of the requirements through this process is, is to uh, record all those comments and then have a report out for the uh, uh, that final recommendation and adoption. So you'll be able to see what comments came in, what was addressed. Um, as it relates to the draft to the final. So you'll be able to compare the uh, edits that were made or what was included or not included through this process. And that's my presentation. I'm happy to field um, any questions. We have that um, the dra- the draft plan is posted on that trpa.gov slash RTP twenty fifty. So you can go take a look at the plan and its appendices. Um, and then our official email to accept public comment is RTP at TRPA dot gov. And I suppose I just want to let folks know publicly, we've been getting public comments submitted through forums like this um, through TRPA's normal public comment website, and we've been including that as comment on the plan as well. So we're capturing all comments on these public hearings that we're presenting at as well, so.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, that was great. I'll just say too, you also presented to our TTIC group, which is the Tahoe Transportation Implementation Collaborative, I think is what it's called. Did I get that right, Rebecca? Yeah, cool. Amazing. Um, we met maybe two weeks ago. It's a group of, you know, a lot of technical uh, local agency staff and the state highway departments, Caltrans, N dot, et cetera. So that's a great group to get something like this in front of because a big part of this plan is is the project list that you mentioned, I think in appendix B. Um, you know, and, and we have a shot, uh, you know, more of a shot at the ones that are at least partially funded already. So that, that's really our role as local governments and state highway agencies to get our projects in there to tee them up, to hopefully get them funded and delivered for the basin to enjoy. So I just wanted to put that note out there and um, we'll open it up for APC member comments now. First, we'll go in the room and then online. Anyone want to say anything to Ryan or Michelle? Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Steve to share for the record. Um, first of all, I want to thank Michelle and her team for extending the deadline for comments to June second. Uh, we did make that request recently and uh, I think the, the one thing that um, I think the public should be aware of is that this regional transportation plan not only covers the requirements of the TRPA regional plan. And the agency's own requirements, but it also covers a lot of the requirements imposed by the federal government and the state government. So sometimes in the comments, I see people talking about this or that or the other thing. But, and you wouldn't, as a, as a member of the public necessarily know that this is really. A federally, has to be a federally compliant and a state compliant document as well. So that sort of narrows the scope in, in some ways. And I think, you know, that's, I've been reading these ever since nineteen ninety-two, when the first seven volume set. Of the TRPA Regional Transportation Air Quality Plan came out in the Dave Ziegler era, era. You know, Dave was quite the scholar, so he had to do something with those seven volumes. Uh, but it was TRPA's first foray into this, and I've read every plan since then. And um, I, I think this one uh, reads well. I think it has a lot of good data. Um, I like the graphics, uh, but um, I just encourage people to read it, but not have. Uh, you know, the end of the world, everything is solved expectation. Uh, because sometimes I think people read our plans and they, they just didn't solve everything. Wh- wh- how could this be? How could this be good? Um, so look at it in that context. The, the other thing that um, you know, always comes to mind, particularly with transportation plans, is that. Money is the, money is the issue. It's always the issue. And. I can just say and touch on the fact that as a person involved extensively with private sector. Uh, both on the south and the north shore, I think we are working with private sector partners to bring them along as a greater. And greater funding partner to work with local governments and the state and federal monies available. Uh, to try to deliver particularly on areas like transit. Um, so, and we're trying to put our funding. Sources with regard to specifically micro transit. On a, on a multi-year footing as opposed to scrambling year to year to figure out if we have enough money to keep the service going. Because one of the things that people who ride transit or depend on transit or like to use it from time to time. You know, they want dependability. They want um, they want to know it's going to be there if they're going to rely on it. And um, and the other part is, you know, the technology here that's touched on is, is really important. Um, whether it's the, you know, green light or, you know, in our case with transit, it's, it's. Being able to look at one app and be able to see where like Lake Link is, where the fixed route service that TDD provides is. Or any other things, you know, all on one app. And that requires a lot of coordination amongst software providers and, and, and creators. And, you know, we're constantly working on that. And so I think technology plays an important role in. In improving our uh, transportation network. So that's it. I, I commend staff for uh, for working hard on this. Uh, it's always a, it's always a tough project, but um, I, I think this is one of the better products that you put out. Thank you.
That's high praise from Steve.
Um, other APC, John?
Michelle Ryan, thanks for that great presentation. I just had a clarification question and I, the city wholeheartedly supports um. Lawn exemptions for sidewalks, adding it. Um, the one question I have. Does that exemption or actually class one trails as well as sidewalks? So that also include kind of the infrastructure comes along with it. For example, the cities have been implementing our bicycle repair stations. We've been putting in benches along our sidewalks and along our class one bike trails. Is that part of that exemption or is that something that maybe TRPA can consider?
Yeah, uh, I'll take my best shot at it, but we do have someone who might be able to answer that more closely. Um, that's a great question. I will say in, I did fail to mention for the sidewalk component specifically, it generally includes um. Others, infrastructure like curb and gutter or storm, storm drains, Keshment basins, things like that, that have that water quality improvement as well. Um, so you get that infrastructure benefit, but you, you raise a good point with um, the bike repair stations, benches. The intent of, um, and again, my colleague Shannon may know more, but the intent of this is to. Um, put sidewalks in the same standing as class one trails. So if uh, we would normally exempt. Uh, if, if part of a class one trail project, you have a bike repair station, that's also this little paved section that folks can repair their bike at. If we normally exempt that from coverage, then that would be the same standing with um, sidewalks. So it's not meant to put one above the other, um, as our code is written for that exemption. I, I don't know specifically if that's how we apply. That code to um, class one trails. But that's, that's my best guess with it. I don't know if John or Michelle.
I, I was just going to ask, John, is that uh, sort of, it's, it's listed as a. For possible action item, is that something you would suggest we include in that code amendment?
Okay, Shannon Friedman with TRPA. So currently with the class one bike trails, the trail itself is exempt. From the calculation of coverage and therefore any mitigation that would be required. But any support infrastructure facilities is not. So um, like trailheads or bike. Maintenance facilities, all of that, we do consider coverage still, and therefore would need to be appropriately mitigated. Um, as other coverages, so that same thing would apply for sidewalks.
So then, yes, I would encourage TRPA to. To consider adding that.
Yeah, I'd, I would second that. And, and if. We have others that agree. So, and I would just say if it, it can't be added. It would be nice if local jurisdictions could use their banked EIP coverage. To be able to put in those other facilities and make, allow that coverage to be moved between, say, uh, coverage retired through an EIP project. That could then go back to an EIP project to provide that public benefit facility. So. Okay. Jennifer, go ahead.
Hi, so um. This is not on my radar at all as far as um, bills, no, bills in the legislature. But um, Nevada Legislative Senate Bill four zero five. Um, if you're not aware of it, is um, creating the Transit to Trails Task Force. And I just happened to have been in the room when it was being heard, because I was there for my own bill. Um, but it seems like a really neat program and it does appear to have gotten out of committee and is headed to the Assembly Floor. And um, the intent, for those of you who aren't tracking the Nevada Legislature for fun, um. That's the only reason I do. Um, there, there was, um, it's, it's a program designed to help um. Uh, particularly youth and families who are transportationally challenged. To get their children out into nature and out into trails and providing public transportation in order to get there. We heard a lot of kids actually train. Um, the testimony on the bill is fantastic. A lot of kids testified on getting out to Red Rock in Las Vegas and getting out to these other places that they. That they would love to get to and would take the bus to do. So um, I, I think it'd be a great thing.
I was going to say, yeah, thank you, Jennifer. We are aware of it and we actually, yeah, we have a, a seat on that committee. And so we'll definitely be a part of that and happy to report back. Thank you. Yeah.
Good. Um, let me go to Mr. Young online. I see your hand up, Eric.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. As always, very nicely done. I don't really have a um. Uh, uh, amendments or changes to offer. Um, what I would offer is to the committee. Is. A reminder of how many things we talk about throughout the year, end up talking about the adopted transportation plan. And it won't be any different. Um, whatever version of this gets adopted, we're going to be using it in our deliberations and our discussions. Um, until it's updated again. Um, uh, the way that the, the transportation plan impacts so many of the issues that come before us is really important. So as this moves forward, um, I'll be thinking about it in those terms. Um, as we move towards some sort of a closer draft for consideration. But um, the thing that I'm, I'm particularly interested in for Washoe County is. Of course, the development of a viable transit system that actually supports the. Planning philosophies and concepts that are trying to be implemented um, by the regional plan and then. Subsequently, therefore by, by our jurisdiction as well. Um, and um, something to help us convince our local community that transit is real. That it's a real solution and that it's um, uh. That when we talk about multifamily development with virtually no parking. Um, and uh, and that when we talk about trying to reduce parking requirements because of transit. And because we want people to get out of their cars. If that doesn't ever actually happen, then it's just a bunch of highfalutin planning nonsense. So this transit stuff is, has to happen. Or else so many of the other things that we're talking about, so many of the other. Planning goals, environmental goals. Um, uh, so much of what we talk about and try to accomplish is. Founded on how well we do the transit system and the transportation system in general. So, um. As this moves forward, uh, we can't just accept it as. Uh, uh, another, um. Another well-done plan. I hope that we can really think about how we're going to have to use this plan. Over the next few years until it's redone. Because there just isn't an APC meaning that goes by that we don't end up talking about the adopted transportation plan. In some way or another. And so as all of us are thinking about this one, let's think about how we're going to be using it and talking about it uh, for our deliberations. And for me, that's particularly going to be about, is this really going to move transit forward? Is this really going to help? The citizens in Washoe County who have to look at um, uh. Really difficult issues of affordable housing, employee housing, how do we make that happen? Or we make that happen through helping people not have any parking? Or we help that, we, we, we make these other goals come true by providing transit? Well, we need to tie the knot on that. Um, we need to come through on our promises on that. So that's how I'm going to be looking at this as it moves forward. And that's how I'm going to be looking at it as we uh, attempt to implement it. Over the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Good comments. Um, I don't see anyone else. I'll jump on the transit band, bandwagon too. I think, you know, that's a, to me. Um, the graphic you showed and highlighted, Ryan, was pretty cool and powerful about where we are and where we want to be. And there, I think there was a twenty-two million dollar gap, which is a lot of money. So how do we, you know, how do we operationally and financially close the transit gap? Uh, and I know there's a lot of bright minds working on that and there's like Steve, for instance, Steve DeShera. And I know, you know, there's a leadership change at TTD and I know that board is very active in pursuing that. And the transit JPA is, you know, is in play, but we have a funding um, issue created by my board on that. Um, so there's a lot more to come there, but I, I just wanted to beat that drum also and support that. And I have a few other just comments. Um, the, the technology section is particularly intriguing. I would love to drive from my house to TRPA and hit all green lights, Ryan. So thank you for making that happen. Um, yeah, just put a lane up. You know, that coordination, I mean, I've lived here for twenty-five years. I think I said that the first day I got here. Why don't these lights talk to each other? Um, yeah, they, they don't. So that would be, that would be wonderful. Parking management, you know, the dream of um. Not driving to the end of Fallen Leaf Lake Road to know that uh, the trailhead there is completely full. Um, to be able to know that in, in real time and make, make plans to go somewhere else would, would change the basin dramatically. If we can get to that point. I liked how you mentioned the evacuation planning, Ryan, and considering that, that, that's a comment that we hear at every APC meeting. We hear it at every governing board meeting. Folks are concerned about capacity issues in Tahoe and evacuation. Uh, in case of a wildfire, which, which will happen again at some point. Bike paths, you know, I'm a local South Shore resident, so this is, you know, me personally, but we have a huge opportunity. And I'll just speak for the South Shore, the same thing probably happens on the North Shore, but to get around the South Shore on a bicycle in the summer months. And even, you know, extended is, is, is a very real possibility for people. It's, it's not that hard. I do it every day almost. And um, we have a flat town, we have trails. And the more of us that are out there, I see Hitchcock walking to work every day. Um, it's kind of reassuring to me. Hey, John, you know, it makes a, a nice um, community feel. It gets us out of our cars and, and exercising together. And it's just a really cool way to live. And the more that the plan can advocate for that type of lifestyle, I don't know how we, you know. Make that more of a reality for people. We need, we need to, you know, bridge a, a mental barrier with folks or whatever the need is. You know, you don't need a nice bike to do it. I don't have one. Um, so I would just have a weekend, encourage that. I think is really important going forward. And the last thing I'm going to talk about is just operations and maintenance. Because from a local government perspective, I know the plan touches on O and M. But the more EIP projects that we deliver with state, federal, local money. Uh, we don't typically get money, although we have things like Measure S uh, to maintain those facilities. And so that's, that's a real, always has been and always will be, as I see it. Um, a real issue for local governments and, and probably the state highway networks on how to. Continue to make the things that we build function. Um, it's a challenge every year. So. Those are my comments. Um, Steve, you want to jump back in?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Steve DeSher for the record. So uh, specific to Mr. Young's comments, um. There is a bill in Nevada Legislature, it's Senate Bill four twenty, that would uh, for the areas of the Tahoe Basin. On the Nevada side would allow uh, the creation of business improvement districts. Uh, there is a nineteen ninety-four law in California which allows business improvement districts. We have. The uh, one in the South Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe Tourism Business Improvement District. We have one on the North Shore that's currently in the renewal process, which is uh, shepherded by the North Tahoe Community Alliance. We don't have that ability in Nevada. So we're, we're working uh, to uh, keep SB four twenty in play. It required substantial amendments from, from its beginning, uh, which we couldn't support, but we can support now. But, you know, Eric was asking specifically to Washoe County and what could be done. Uh, it would specifically allow the creation of a business improvement district for uh, Crystal Bay and Incline Village. So um, that's something to be aware of. I'm sure Eric is aware of it. Um, it's interesting that. Uh, the opposition to the bill so far has come from not business people, but residents, some residents of Incline Village and Crystal Bay. So tough territory there. Uh, but it's a really good bill in terms of an opportunity. To create a transit-related business improvement district as one uh, possibility. That could provide sustainable funding over a long period of time for, for transit. So that's where the bright minds part comes in. Thank you.
Thank you for your advocacy on that, Steve. Final thoughts from APC members? Graham, do you want to jump in? I don't see any. Nope. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, for the record, to note, because we have the remote meeting, but we, we don't have a quorum now, so just for the meeting record. Um, but we don't have any action other than to adjourn after a comment and everything, so we're fine to keep going.
Thanks for letting us know. Okay, so we're going to move to public comment. Is there a way we can eat? Pizza while we do this somehow, or we just have to keep smelling it? I don't know. Um. We, we don't have to, we can do it after. I'm just trying to think.
We have working lunches at the governing board all the time, so just.
Why doesn't, why don't folks, sorry for you, those of you online, but why don't you, I'll, um, I'll call members up. You've probably been eating. Um, but why don't you go ahead and feel free to, to get some lunch while we hear public comment? I'll um, I'll call members up. You've probably been eating. Um, but why don't you go ahead and feel free to to get some lunch while we hear public comment? And I will move us there now, so. Uh, let's see. I'm gonna move us to public comment on item five B. Ms. Waller's already ready. We'll uh, take public comment in the room and then we will go online. So for members online. Click uh, on the Advisory Planning Commission Meeting Wednesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty-five link. There you'll find us on Zoom. And please go ahead and raise your hand now at the bottom of your Zoom screen if you wish to comment. Or dial star nine on your telephone, and you'll be called upon by a TRPA staff member at your appropriate time. So we will go to the room first, and I'll go to Ms. Waller.
Oh, there we go. Different lights. Thank you, um, Ellie Waller. I wasn't gonna comment today, but I was glad to hear. Um, about people discussing legislative meetings. I've attended many of the Senate. And Assembly meetings on some of the transportation issues like SB four twenty and SB. Uh, four twenty-six, which is the safety zone. Um, it has a really long title. Um, about having paid parking um, facilities allowed and um. I believe that the public has influenced a change where US fifty will remain four lanes. It is in the uh, bill now as it's going forward. Also, they added um, state route two oh seven. This goes to my comment. That relates to uh, the Barton Project as well, so that's why I think there needs to be some additional analysis. As done with that intersection um, as as part of, but I wanna get back to topic. I'm trying to stay on topic. Yes, there's current challenges to sustainable funding. It is very apparent. Current challenges with federal funds are thwarting those efforts. I understand that. Future planning that started as ACR five, the seven 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 plan. I'm not sure where or how that's gonna stay in play, if and when. Um, I I would really like the challenges of smaller communities like or counties like Douglas County and Carson City. Not be put into the same bucket as the larger counties with an expectation of seven million each year. Um, it it it's gonna be impossible for the smaller counties to um, be pushed into. That large of a contribution. Um, I I I just really can't. Um, and I I have gone before the committees um, uh, during the legislative interims about that plan. Um, I really think that needs to be looked at, and I'm hoping TRPA will take some of that in consideration. With uh, anticipated population increases, where and how are capacity issues going to be addressed? Um, if we are going to start reducing parking uh, in the town centers. We will need more bicycle areas. We have such a fixed infrastructure. It's very different on North Shore. I spent there twenty years there. Stacy has seen me often, um, and I appreciate that I um, can speak with county staff still. I still look at projects around the lake. Um, I'm kind of unique that way. Um, and about um, uh, seasonality being addressed, and of course, the restrooms. Impacting the businesses, um, because we don't have enough restrooms. It's hard for the little restaurant owner to say, sorry, no. This is for for people, so we we need to put that into some of the planning as well. And uh, infrastructure, um, dependability, the topic of Lake Link related to last agenda item. Are there gonna be dedicated buses for for patients um, that need to get appointments, so on and so forth? So I think the devil's in the details, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, seeing none, let's go online, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one hand raised online, Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Hi, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, Chair, members of the committee. The outcomes stated in the plan are hardly highly controversial and uncertain. No agency, including the TRPA, its plans, initiatives, and code amendments, including the draft twenty twenty-five Regional Transportation Plan. And sustainable community strategy should make it harder for Lake Tahoe residents and visitors to escape deadly wildfires. Any actions that make it harder for people to escape deadly wildfires violates both the Nevada and California State Constitution. Protection of the pursuit of safety. Going further, the TRPA failed to provide substantial evidence within the IS, IEC. Per the BIC State Compact and SEQA to support its environmental conclusions. I'll be addressing that in my. Future comments before the deadlines. This thereby violates SEQA. And therefore making the findings objected to arbitrarily arbitrary capricious implementation of the plan. Without a cumulative comprehensive EIS will be an act of prejudicial abuse of discretion. Also, mitigations are mentioned, including war forest thinning and prescribed burning. Forest thinning, prescribed burning, unified command exercises, home hardening, and agency implementation of tactical response plans aimed to reduce. Wildfire risk. However, claims or suggestions that forest thinning and prescribed burning can somehow mitigate. Loss of life during a fast-moving, no-notice fire weather, wind, and slope environment wildfire evacuation. Are highly controversial, speculative, and uncertain. Approving or promoting such claims during project or code change approvals without robust. Substantial data-driven evidence and accumulatively considered EIS is arbitrary capricious and would result in an abuse of discretion. These claims of mitigation contradict historical evidence and risk and could give residents and visitors a false sense of security. Potentially delaying evacuation decisions during a fast-moving wildfire, as documented substantially in numerous accounts. Of harrowing escapes that have previous in areas that have previously undergone forest thinning and prescribed burning. In fact, no substantial evidence exists that forest thinning and prescribed burning will mitigate. Substantial loss of life during a fast-moving, no-notice wildfire evacuation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Chair, there are no more hand raised to comment.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, we'll close public comment. Ryan, Michelle, would you like to respond to anything or?
No, I'd like to thank the public. That's exactly what we're we're looking for, and I look forward to working with Mr. Flaherty. Online, we did fail to mention, we do have our environmental consultants and. Um, everything in this plan was prepared in-house with the exception, we need that. Um, that talent from from Rincon to help us with that environmental analysis, so. Uh, we look forward to being able to respond to those detailed comments. Um, other than that, I would just say, on a positive note, thank you, Brendan, for your comments. Um, a lot of this infrastructure we're talking about is out there today and ready for you, ready for you to ride. Um, buses on the South Shore running every thirty minutes, so this is definitely a look ahead, that twenty-five-year vision to keep us on track. And moving in the right direction, but by no means do y'all have to wait for it. Um, plenty of it, plenty of it is here today. Thanks.
Nice, that's a, that's a good comment. It's a good reminder. Okay, perfect. This also, any final thoughts from APC members? We're good. Um, we have it, you're on your path to approval. Um, comment period closes June sixth. June second, sorry, the previous one, I think, was June sixth, June second.
Can I, yeah, just to clarify, Ryan Murray, June second at ten AM.
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
Don't sleep in that day.
Nine fifty-nine AM.
Nine fifty-nine.
But it's all, it's all on the website. It it lists the time and the day, June, June second.
Don't miss the deadline if you wanna comment. Don't sleep in, June second. Okay, thank you so much. We have no action here. Um, so I will close item five B, and I'm gonna move us on to reports. First, I will go to Mr. Hester for the Executive Director Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to uh, help you enjoy your pizza. Oh, you're welcome for that, but uh, you know, this report's gonna be even better. As you've requested, um, report on what your previous, the results of your previous actions. As you know, we didn't meet last month, the month before that, you approved the allocations. Now that was approved at the governing board. Uh, you also at the, and Mr. Flaherty brought this up. Uh, at the end of the last meeting, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you and and Member Garth Doll. Asked that we report back at some point on forest health and evacuation. Um, the governing board has an item this month on forest health and evacuation. And uh, we will follow up with you to bring that report to you. Um, maybe not. All of the speakers and everybody that's there will be here, but we'll make sure you get that information. Upcoming items, uh, obviously, the Regional Transportation Plan and the environmental analysis and the code amendments that were just talked about will. Be coming back. Uh, Tahoe Living Working Group will be bringing some items. Uh, the Washoe County Tahoe Area Plan will be coming back, coming to you with Phase Two amendments, and then the final threshold report are scheduled. Uh, and then the last thing I wanted to bring up and ask for APC members. Participant, participation or assistance in is, we are working to align. Uh, you probably all, may maybe you do or don't know this, but if I tell you about it, you'll go, oh, yes, but. We have town centers, we have bonus unit boundaries, we have urban area in the regional plan, we have. Stormwater service areas, sanitary sewer service areas, all different kinds of areas. I think at last count, there was about a dozen of them that I have written down, that. Align somewhat, but not totally. And we want to align them all so that all of these things, the incentives are working together and the disincentives are working together, so. When you can trans, an area where you can transfer development right and get a bonus for it should be the same area where. Uh, you can get bonus units for housing and et cetera. So um. We've got a GIS staff person on our staff who's doing a preliminary job of putting those together. But what I would request from you all is if you all can send me an email, letting me know who from your jurisdiction, if you have someone from your jurisdiction. Who wants to uh, participate in that either in the form of suggesting layers. I'll I'll send them a list of what we're already looking at, but suggesting additional layers, and when we get it together, maybe looking at it and saying, did we align them correctly? Because ultimately, we will, that will be something coming back to the APC. Uh, so I would appreciate, uh, we're trying to get that done by the end of June. Because then we'd like to use it to uh, update our project impact assessment, impact assessment tool that we use for. Uh, analyzing VMT for projects um, later in the summer, uh, so that it doesn't hold up anything. And so um, if you all could give me contacts, if you're interested in participating, that would be very helpful. And so that's my request and my report. Thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, I encourage you all to reach out to John then. And any questions for John? Okay, Graham, it's on to you for our legal counsel report.
No, no legal counsel report today. Just thank you all for good meeting today and good discussion.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Okay, APC members, it's your turn. If you have anything you'd like to share with us, I'll just go around the room. Stacy?
Yes, uh, good afternoon. Uh, so just a few items from Pasco County. Uh, we did issue a substantial conformance for the Homewood uh, Mountain Master Plan. Um, I know it went through TRPA, um, and then we followed suit as it relates to our condition of approval, or excuse me, our conditionally. Uh, conditional use permit. Um, so just to make sure that those two are aligned. Um, as they move forward with the development of their master plan. And then also, um, we had what we're calling a discuss and discover event um, that was held. We've been doing them at least twice a year. Um, this last one was held in the North Tahoe Event Center, so. Um, we had folks with booths, you know, transportation, TRPA joined us. Um, and uh, really a successful event in uh, getting the opportunity for the public to come out. And, you know, learn what they don't know, or or ask questions for the things that they do know. Um, and so. Again, I think this is our, that was our third one that we had put on and um, quite successful, and so. Um, yeah, and happy to answer any questions if you guys have any on that.
Good idea. Yeah, we should, we should do that. Cool. James?
Commissioner Hill asked me to uh, meet with the Incline Village Crystal Bay Association. They're pursuing or trying to inform each other about building a town center or remodeling it or whatever. So I'm working with the staff here and meeting them. To just try and bring some information to them. So that's the only thing I'm working on, other than following uh. Uh, legislative developments on uh, insurance uh, for HOAs and. Uh, owners in Washo, well, in fact, Washoe County and Douglas, I guess. Uh, we have. One bill that's still alive, uh, three seventy-six Assembly Bill, uh, which might affect a lot of people here. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tashara.
Nothing further today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Jennifer? No? Ms. Stoller? Good. Hitch?
Um, let's see this, uh, our planning commission just approved seventy-five unit deed restricted project at thirty-nine hundred. Lake Tahoe Boulevard. We're hoping it gets funded in the next year, two years or so, construction can start. Um, we're seeing a lot of activity in this sound. Glad um, to tell one that Sunray, the blighted property has been torn down. Aster Station, I'm not Aster Station, Mr. Reynolds' old property has been torn down. And there's activity going on, I think, is it Lily's tire? Um, property, so a lot of our blighted um, properties, we're starting to see some activity and some new development, so we're excited.
We are excited, yes. Thank you for pursuing that. It's great. Gives us something fun to talk about every time we drive down there. Look at, there's more of the building down. Okay, cool.
The city took the prop, we were gonna take the property to receivership, and um, then the property owners finally. Decided to do the right thing, tear it down, but there's currently no plans to develop developing there. We're gonna, you know, work with them to see if we can get something. Uh, get that site redeveloped.
That's great. Thank you to the city. Uh, let's go online. Mr. Young?
Uh, not so many, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ms. Cyber?
Yes, hi, everybody. Um, this time of year is definitely, you know, a busy time for us in the Forest Service. I'll mention a few uh, project updates. I mentioned previously that the Basin Wide Trails Project is still currently um, on hold. Our Lake Tahoe West Project, we are looking to come out with our draft EA. For that project in the next couple of weeks, pending a couple of reviews. From our regional office. The Caldor Restoration Project just finished up scoping not too long ago. So, and so we're working through uh, the comments from that and developing. A draft EA for that, which we would expect to be sometime in the spring, that that would come out, or excuse me. In the fall, that that would come out. Um, we are. In the process of, you know, opening up lots of rec sites, opening up roads. Um, you know, this time of year is always a, a transition period, and. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about specific areas or specific projects that you're curious about. I might not have the answers, but I could find those out for folks. Um. I think that. A theme that I've brought to this group uh, is that we are working through changes in the agency, and that continues to be the case, and. So thank you, everyone, um, that, you know, all of our partners that we work with for. Patients during this period, cuz we're doing our best to. Provide for the public and for the land, so thank you.
We wish you the best in that endeavor. Yeah, sounds challenging. Okay, uh, updates from me, you may have seen, if you live anywhere near the South Shore, that we have begun construction on the Pioneer Trail Roundabout. At the intersection of Pioneer Trail and US Highway fifty, so. We should be able to complete that project this summer. There's gonna be a lot of traffic impacts in that area, so just keep that in mind and get on your bicycle. We also are completing. We also are completing a complete streets-ish project down Apache Avenue, which is in Myers, where we're building a class one bike path and a sidewalk to connect Highway 50 down to the Myers Elementary School. And then over to the Tahoe Paradise Park, which has the bridge connection over into the North Upper Truckee Neighborhood. So all that network is really coming together. Uh, it's pretty cool to see. Um, our board met in Tahoe yesterday. It was nice to have them up here. They'll also be back September 30th. We did have a snow removal item and we talked, of course, about VHRs and ADUs and all the fun planning things. So they're going to task us to look at some additional things and come back with some changes, uh, which is, which is their job. That'll be fun. The Myers Advisory Council Meeting, it's tomorrow night, Thursday, um, out at the Lake Valley Fire Station. I'd encourage anyone who's, wants to participate to come on out there. I think it's 4:30 to 6:00. Um, also just John mentioned this, but just so everyone knows, uh, Tahoe Living Working Group is meeting uh, next Monday, I think it is the 19th, where we'll be, um, having an item about a handbook that was produced on how phase three is going to roll out. So that's a subcommittee of, of the APC that I'll be chairing back in this room on the 19th. And I think that's it for me. So, oh, Ms. Cyber, would you like a go back? It looks like?
I do have one go back, uh, because this was brought up by someone from the public earlier related to wildlife crossings. Um, you know, wildlife crossing the road. We are, um, in the process of, uh, initiating, uh, feasibility study with the, um, and I'm going to get the name wrong, is the, like the California Wildlife Board, um, to look at some, uh, wildlife under crossings, not over crossings, um, in California, um, one around the Taylor Creek area, two on Pioneer Trail over, I believe Trout and Cold Creek. And then one, um, on, uh, Highway 89. So just wanted to, partially in response to the, that public's, uh, interest related to that, we are starting to try and, um, address that issue with some of the existing and in the existing locations of where the wildlife are, are crossing so that we don't have to have significant amounts of like fencing or anything like that to funnel, you know, animals where we're trying to get them to cross. So just wanted to add that into the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, we, we've actually met with that group several times and I think we will be, it sounds like potentially applying for a grant for the under crossings on Pioneer Trail at Cold Creek and Trout Creek, which there's wildlife cameras set up and they're really capturing some amazing footage. If you do some web searching, I'm sure you can find it, but you can see all the beautiful creatures out there trying to cross the road through our pipes and running across the road. And it's pretty amazing to see. It's really fascinating. So. So great. Let me, um, close item six and we're going to go to item seven. We have a final public interest comment period. We'll first take public interest comments from members in the room and then we'll go online. So for members of the public online, please go ahead and raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen now or dial star nine on your telephone and we will call upon you after we take public interest comment in the room. Please, um, just a reminder, we are prohibited by law from taking action on any items not on our agenda. So, um, we will go in the room now. Hello again, Ms. Waller.
Uh, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, any comments made on the Barton agendized item that comes at closing public comment, I'm hoping will be forwarded uh, to Jacob and appropriate staff. You received some support from the hospital staffs and the doctors. Um, I think it's great that there's huge support, but they don't live in the neighborhood that's fully impacted. And I hope in the future they do come forward and study the site and understand the concerns of the citizens. With that said, SB, uh, 420, I don't live in Incline and I don't live in Crystal Bay. I don't live in Tahoe anymore, but I'm part of the portions of, of pushback on the, the bid improvement districts. Um, I was in opposition when I lived in Placer County, just on how they're framed. And, uh, there are, uh, existing four that I know of right now in California lawsuits against the bid assessment districts. They're more like taxes and the voters should have a right to vote on them. Um, I don't appreciate calling out communities on anything. The public, um, does come, I think, with some credibility in some arenas. Um, also with the, uh, Barton, um, issues that are coming forward, I do hope each and every one, uh, that gets, um, contacted from the public, um, understands the on the ground concerns um, from those citizens that are most affected and the wildlife that can't speak for itself. I want to thank, uh, Ms. Cyber, um, and the US Forest Service for their comprehensive comments during the EA. Um, they are invaluable comments. Um, what else did I have today? I'm all over the place. Well, I think, um, that's enough for today and I appreciate, uh, again, thanking you for, when you do have those detailed, robust discussions of, about issues that don't necessarily um, take place, um, at other committees and, um, I do respect, um, the planners know what planning is. I do respect the scientists that come to the table. And I hope in the future, um, there are more robust discussions at different levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
Hi there again, uh, John Gerner. I'm a resident, uh, on Laura Drive. Um, just wanted to kind of put on the record that, you know, Lakeside was a very, very small neighbor, uh, local, uh, casino. And the rest of those properties and parcels have all been combined into one. So when looking at analysis, I'm hoping they're not trying to look at it as, oh, this was one big casino. It is not. It was a very small casino with just less than 200 full-time employees. So I don't think that, uh, that comparing it to a full casino like, uh, uh, Harrah's, Harvey's and, and Bailey's and everyone is, is, is a fair, uh, fair, uh, comparison for a casino. There was a lot of other businesses on that property that were just small businesses. Olson Paving, a small, the hotel was quite small. Their real estate offices that were there were obviously, um, there for some time. And I don't think the land use should be compared to a casino. So I'm hopefully, uh, hoping it's only partially compared to a casino rather than, you know, all we've seen so far is that the whole site was a massive casino. It was not. Um, I'd also like to talk about the compatibility of that to our neighborhood. Um, at the moment, you know, if you, if you were to live next door to a helicopter pad as proposed, it was 200 feet from my living room uh, and my bedroom. It's totally unacceptable. There is, there's no way in, in the world that that could be considered comparable. The, uh, amount of extra ambulance noise that's going to come there, the traffic, the helicopter noise, the pollution from a helicopter, I believe they shoot out unburnt, uh, jet fuel on, on startups, which would be right above our houses. Um, there's a, there's a total lack of parking, which will make our, our neighborhood, you know, we heard a lot about the parking and, and transportation, everything. Uh, a nightmare. I can't imagine that the employees of the hospital, the thousand to 1,200 of them every day, they're going to fit into 250 or 70 parking lots. And I can't imagine they're going to bust them from the California side and require all employees to park their cars on their dual campus. Just can't see that's going to be happen, uh, going to happen. Water management on the site is an issue. I think if we give all the resources and, and extra capacity in the storm grain systems to just one, one developer, I think that is an unfair scenario. What we're seeing here at the Beach Club is that they've had failures on their water management. And I think we need to learn a lesson from that, um, in that. And the Event Center, I'm led to believe, has some water management issues. Um, which to date, no one at TRPA wants to share with us, but we've, we've asked a lot of questions. I think it would be important to share the water management issues on those before the finishing of comment on the environmental impact study. Um, I think that the trailhead is going to create issues for our neighborhood. And the high speed of vehicles, one through the ambulances, yes, they're trained drivers, but the number of people that have to take their own person to their hospital because they don't want to pay for an ambulance, they are going to be speeding through the corridor, speeding through our neighborhoods. And that's, and right at a trailhead. There's better options, um, and I think it's not compatible for that, for that hospital. I think if you look at, uh, other hospitals around the areas, I see Davis, there's an article about Davis. Uh, they're willing to, or, or offering all the neighborhood residents, because they've put a hospital into, into a neighborhood, they're offering to pay up to $35,000 for those residents to redo their doors, insulation and windows. The idea of that is that they know that they're causing damage to those neighborhoods. They want those people to stay in their houses, not you, not be able to enjoy their spaces that they live in. Because they're, they're going to have windows, they're going to try and prevent the, uh, amount of noise damage to the, to the constituents living in houses right next to it. I ask that we really don't make that same decision, do that to the neighborhood and the people, the working, you know, we are a lower socioeconomic uh, neighborhood than the people that presented today. Um, and I hope that they don't just basically shit on us in our neighborhood. That's kind of what we're looking for out of that. You can always turn around and say you can mitigate things, but can you mitigate damage? Can you mitigate something once it's already there? Um, and uh, the last thing I have to say is I think that they're, they're building, uh, on 6.2 acres, they're building something that should be on 20 acres down in South Lake Tahoe or 20 acres somewhere else. Um, the size of the, of the building far exceeds what, uh, what should be built on that piece of land. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Jane. Thank you for the work you're doing on this. I live in state line and I've been an ER nurse at Barton now for 20 years. I am wholeheartedly against the hospital relocating to Nevada. As one of many locals that love and care for beautiful Lake Tahoe, it strains my credulity that such an incompatible and environment overwhelming project as a huge hospital could even be considered at the old Lakeside location. I have grave concerns about the shrinking scenic view availability along Highway 50, about the noise and clamor of a 24/7 hospital on residential neighbors in Ray Meadow, about the large amount of vehicle traffic a healthcare facility generates at an already congested, dangerous intersection, among other worries. But as a nurse, my primary opposition to this move is because I believe it will be detrimental to the safe and effective care of patients. An updated hospital is just a building blocking a beautiful view if the injured and ill can't get to the hospital quickly enough for life-saving treatment. If experienced local nurses can't be retained to provide care, or if medical care becomes financially prohibitive and overly complicated for most of the community the hospital is supposed to serve. Barton's board and executives want to move the hospital across the state line from the population center of the community and are placing the physical obstacle of an often bottlenecked and time-consuming drive in the way of people that need the most immediate medical response we can give them. Barton is a level three trauma center that receives critically injured patients requiring rapid, advanced medical attention for survival. Many of whom would have to travel through the perpetually crowded Highway 50 casino corridor to reach life-saving care should the hospital move to Nevada. A new hospital may be beautiful on the outside, but I'm more concerned about the patient care conditions within. California has mandated safe nurse-to-patient staffing ratios, which have proven beneficial effects on patient outcomes. When we unionized in 2017, Barton began adhering to California's safe staffing laws after 13 years of depriving our community of the benefits of safe staffing. And shortly thereafter began winning awards for patient care. Barton's management has been happy to show off the awards the hospital has received. But Barton's executives have flatly refused to maintain in Nevada the same working conditions that won those awards. As a result, many local nurses with years of experience plan to end their employment with Barton and find jobs elsewhere should the hospital move to Nevada. Also of great concern is the effect that Barton's potential move to Nevada will have on the community's ability to access care without financial hardship. Insurance coverage varies from state to state and what might be paid in full in one state may not be in another. Private health and, health insurance is complex and bureaucratic as our Medi-Cal, Medicare and Medicaid. Barton is already one of the most expensive healthcare providers in the region. And it is unlikely that the Barton executives proposing a new hospital in Nevada can accurately anticipate the financial effect this move will wreak on our patients' ability to access and pay for the care they need. As a state line resident, I ask that the most rigorous and exacting environmental assessments be performed. As a nurse, I ask that the community look closely at what exactly Barton's executives and board of directors intend to do, and especially what they plan not to do in Nevada. Not just the building itself, but the quality of services Barton's management plans to provide within. I ask that you put the health and safety of our community above any other considerations and fully explore the no project alternative. Thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you very much for those comments. Anyone else in the room? Okay, seeing none, Catherine, we'll go online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one hand raised online, Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org, and uh, 53 years of experience in emergency response, emergency response planning and consulting. And, um, at one time, living and working in the Santa Ana Canyon as a fire combat battalion chief. Um, I just want to let the US Forest Service know that the continued pollution of the Lake Tahoe basin, based on ad hoc prescription, uh, controlled, supposedly controlled prescribed fire, um, that continues to produce smoke, which is very unhealthy for children, families. We're just not going to tolerate it anymore. You've got to get within your prescribed levels. There's rules and regulations on that. You need to comply with the TRPA and air quality requirements. You're going to step up, uh, you've, you've stated you're going to step up burning 365 days a year. Well, okay, so I don't want to do it because it's a lot of work, but we have a $20,000 EPM, EPA-approved air monitor. We're going to start deploying it. And we're going to start pushing back on these reckless claims that you're working closely with the air quality, um, agencies. Second of all, escape prescribed burns. Historically, huge numbers of substantial evidence that prescribed burns that are started seven to 10 days before, uh, red flag or wind events, uh, can easily escape. You need to do 24-hour monitoring several days after you start and extinguish the burn. Because if you get a wind event, it's going to perhaps spread the fire and there's going to be nobody there monitoring it to stop it. You need to do better on that. Uh, an example is, uh, um, the Little Valley Escape Prescribed Burn and the Cables Fire Escape Prescribed Burn. Thirdly, not many people want to talk about it, but it's true. It's been demonstrated the US Forest Service has in its forest plan, the ability to continue to use wildfire to supposedly, um, increase the health of, of the forest. We're not going to tolerate that. Um, we, we've been working on a lawsuit for three years. We're waiting it to see if the Trump administration is going to put an end to that, but um, the Caldor Fire was a fire that the US Forest Service steered up the American River Canyon. There's plenty of proof on that. And prescribed burning and thinning did not stop the fire. You got a break in the weather. So anyway, we're, we're going to continue to push back on that. Um, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
Great. Thanks, Catherine. Okay, we'll close that public comment period and that takes us to our last item, which is adjournment. We don't have a quorum, but we, I'll still let us adjourn without a quorum. Um, I guess. Otherwise we have to stay here till we get a quorum back. Um, thank you, Steve. Steve has the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye, aye? We stand adjourned at 1:33. Thank you all. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks.